All right, we'll get started. We'll call to order the April 16, 2019, full city council meeting. Clerk will call the roll and record those in attendance.
Anderson Burgos?
Here.
Bresnahan, I mean Bartley. Bresnahan. Leahy?
Present.
LeBron Martinez?
Here.
Lisi?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
McGivern?
Here.
Murphy?
Here.
Sullivan?
Here.
Tomlin?
Here.
Bacon?
Here.
Valentine?
Here.
Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
God bless America.
And the City of Hoyoke.
And the City Council.
First on the agenda is public comment. We have two people signed up. Evan Nathman? Sorry about that. Forty-seven Elliott Street. Just tap the microphone, make sure it's on. There's a button on top or the bottom.
The lever on the top, yeah. There you go.
I can speak loud, too. Hi, I'm here to talk about Agenda Item Twenty-One. I'm disappointed that a member of our City Council is advancing the inaccurate claims made by anti-choice extremists, and therefore supporting ongoing efforts to attack legal abortion and roll back people's rights. There's an issue of harmful versus helpful language when we talk about this, and unfortunately, the Agenda Item includes harmful language. Most importantly, it needs to be accurate and truthful, which this Agenda Item isn't, and I encourage the City Council to vote no.
Thank you. Next is Ann Talheimer of Eight Clark Street.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address the Council. I also am here to speak out against Item Twenty-One for the reasons previously expressed, but also because I look to my elected officials to advocate for the health and the well-being of our city and not to spend time kind of playing political games or bringing things forward that are more based in personal opinion. We are, of course, entitled to our personal opinions. This is what makes us great, both as a city and as a country, but it's also important to keep Holyoke in mind first as we're working through these things. Healthcare is a human right. Abortion is part of healthcare. It is legal, and it is protected, and all people should be able to make those healthcare decisions for themselves, including safe and legal abortion without unjust and unnecessary barriers. And again, the inflammatory language in this particular item shames people who have abortions and access this kind of healthcare and stigmatizes the doctors who care for them. I urge you to vote no on this item. Do not let it go to committee. Do not let it go forward. Vote no. Shut it down. Thank you.
That is all for public comment. Next is communications. One is from the acting City Solicitor, a letter regarding the debt exclusion.
I believe we all received a copy, so I'll make the motion to receive.
Motion is to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Two is from the auditor. It's the monthly reports from the general fund and wastewater treatment for March three first.
I think the motion is to copy to finance.
Motion is to receive, refer to finance. Did everyone get a copy?
Yes.
Make sure. All those in favor? All opposed? Three is from the city clerk and our Assistant Administration, the minutes of April 2nd, 2019. Everyone had a chance to review. Any corrections? No issues?
I'm making a motion to receive, but I'm looking at Joe.
Motion is to receive. All those in favor? All opposed?
Second.
Four is a marijuana establishment. It's a meeting announcement for April 22, 2019, at Kelly School.
Make a motion to receive.
Let me just make sure.
Have we got a copy of that?
So I just want to make sure we give the time. So April 22, 2019, at 6:00 PM at Kelly School, 216 West Street, with regards to this applicant. Motion is to receive. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Petitions. Five is a renewal of a pool table and six billiard tables at 624 South Bridge Street.
Motion to receive and grant the renewal.
Second.
Pending all municipal fees and taxes are paid.
All the taxes are paid. They're current, so motion is to receive and grant it with the conditions. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Six is a petition from Buddha Brothers, which is a special permit for a marijuana establishment.
Receive and refer to ordinance.
Motion is to refer to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seven and eight as a package.
Motion to suspend the rules. Take up seven and eight as a package. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Seven is a petition for a special permit for a commercial drive-through at 1675 North Hampton Street. And eight is a, hold on one second, is a vendor's license in front of 56 Adams Street. Counsel Vacan.
Typically, we refer the petitions for the drive-throughs to DGNR.
Okay. And the vendor license goes to?
To ordinance.
Okay, so we'll take up seven, send it to DGNR. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? And eight would be to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
President's report. Make it quick. I did have a question on it. So April 18 is in two days. That is a luncheon with Doctors Reich and members from the state delegation to talk about the schools and funding. I know it was supposed to be at Dean, and they moved it to PEC. If there are any questions, reach out to Doctors Reich. Everyone should have received an email on this with the invite. If you didn't, let me know, but you're supposed to be all invited. That's at 12:30 at PEC. Also, Counsel Bartley won't be joining us tonight. There's a family issue, so he is in Florida right now. And finally, I'd like to congratulate Counsel Valentin and Counsel McGivern for an outstanding job at the Spelling Bee this year. You know, they came in second to last, but, you know, we're not here to judge. No, they, awesome job. I mean, we started this a few years back. Counsel Valentin? The champ is in the room. Congratulations. It's a fun event. People dress up for it. They just, it's a great time. This year, I came back from DC, went down with the kids, so obviously, I wasn't going to be able to spell, but we had a substitute. It was a better person than me, and that was Devin Sheehan, a school committee member. I want to thank him as well. Just a great time, and I'm glad that Counsel McGivern, Valentin were able to represent the City Council again. So, great job, and I thank you very much. Counsel McGivern?
We're just happy, Mr. President, that, you know, you were smart enough to bring two toddlers so you could get out of spelling.
No, no, I actually volunteered miles because you would have been better off.
Stop right there. But I do want to say to the champions, congratulations. We have one of them, of course, this evening, but they got ripped off on best costume because I think they had best costume, too.
It's great with the costumes, too. Great job.
If I could throw the chair to Counsel McGivern. Slide before E, except after C, something like that. If you can speak Latin, you would have done well.
Anyone else? Any other announcements or anything we missed? No? Okay, we'll move on.
Mr. President, I'd like to proceed out of order suspending the rules to Item Number Twenty-One since there's members of the public interested in that item.
All right, hold on.
A second.
Motion is to suspend the rules. Go out of order to Item Twenty-One. Wait for... As Ryan's getting that, I did forget one thing, and I do apologize. I do have a communication here from Ryan with regards to our advertising line item. As we all know, it was not funded in the budget, and we've had several advertisements with regards to special permits or public hearings, what have you, which have added up to $2,123 currently. There are still various orders in the pipeline, as is pointed out in the letter, and therefore, those hearings will have to be paid for as advertisements as well, and we're looking at a shortfall there as well as 1,500. So, in essence, what Ryan has been doing is taking from other line items in order to pay advertising, which should have been funded in our budget. So I have filed an order to request free cash of $3,623 in order to fund that line item to then allow us to get money back for supplies and everything else. We have copying machines that have no ink and everything else, so we have to fix that. So that is just an update as to the budget for our side. Now, off to Twenty-One. It is an order from Counsel Vacan, order that the City Council adopt a resolution opposing House Bill 3320 and Senate Bill 1209, also referred to as the Roe Bill, and send it to our state representative and senator. These bills expand mass abortion laws beyond Roe versus Wade, allow for late-term abortions, eliminate parental consent for minors, and allow for babies born alive to be denied medical care as some of the proposed changes.
Thank you, Mr. President. My motion is to receive and send to DGR Committee.
Second.
Motion is to receive, refer to DGNR. It was seconded.
I'm going to motion that it...
And I would, may I speak on my motion?
Counsel Vacan.
Thank you. So I filed this motion because these two bills are current in our state. They will be addressed by our elected representatives, and in this body, we have dealt with many resolutions that don't even pertain to business within the state, which we have acted on, taken a position on, et cetera. So it's certainly within our realm as a representative body to take positions on matters that are before our elected representatives. Relative to the comments made on the content of the language in my order, the content in this language is accurate. The change in law would allow for abortions after 24 weeks, which science tells us is a point of viability where a baby can live outside the mother. This is an expansion beyond our current laws. Our governor, while he supports the current law, does not support this expansion in the law. It also does remove parental consent requirements for minors, and it does allow for medical care to be withheld from a baby that happens to be born alive. And the position that I speak to on this is that it should not matter where a baby is born. Once the baby is born, the baby, under any logic, is a person and entitled to protection and care, and certainly entitled to life. So this bill goes way beyond our current law, and science tells us that a baby of 24 weeks and further in development is capable of living outside the mother. And so it's a different level that this change in the law would bring our current law to, and that's the reason that I filed it. Thank you.
Counsel Lisi.
I'm motioning to amend the motion and motioning that it be denied instead. I want to say that I fully support any counselor's, you know, proposal or order to file a resolution and have the City Council adopt a resolution in support of an issue that they feel strongly about. I think, however, that when it comes to making sure that people have access to safe abortions and healthcare, that it's an issue of morality, and I don't think that the government should be legislating on the different choices that people make regarding morality. This is an issue that I think everybody in the room is familiar with. There's nothing to be studied. And so I don't see there being any value in sending it to committee. We could all cast a vote this evening, and I don't think the vote this evening is going to be any different than if we were to quote-unquote "study" it in committee.
Counsel Valentin.
Can I second Counsel Lisi's motion first because it's an amendment? Okay. So I'll second Counsel Lisi's amendment that, and if I understand correctly, that it doesn't go to DGR, but that we vote on it tonight. Correct? Okay. So what I would like to say is that I'm a little confused as to why we are looking at a resolution like this on two things. Number one, it says that it would be to send it to our state representative and our state senator, who we already know how both of them actually stand on this issue very clearly. They've both been vocal about it. And second, I feel that this, you know, I mean, we could argue for hours about what's an appropriate resolution, what isn't, what do we vote on, what are we not. I just want to remind us that it took a year for a resolution that I filed about making Holyoke a safe space and an anti-hate resolution, which is what the press had called it. It took a year for that to happen, and that was, you know, nothing to do about, you know, morality or personal approaches to a topic like this. It was about making our community safe. This is, I believe, really us addressing a resolution like this is really about infringing on others and decisions, as Counsel Lisi stated. Folks that can make their own decisions, I don't think it's something that pertains to us, so I don't think it would be a fair point to compare this resolution to others that we've brought forward. So I will be in support of Counsel Lisi's amendment to deny the order here tonight, and if that fails, I will be voting against sending it to committee. Thank you.
Counsel Leahy.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you so much. This order obviously got a lot of attention. I received some very interesting phone calls today, to say at the least. And the majority of those phone calls were just stating the fact that the way this is worded is misleading. Now, can I say that? I can't say that. I have not read SB 1209 or HB 3320, and I admit that. So I can't say if it's misleading or not. The majority of the phone calls that I received today state that it is. Now, the fact that I don't know this and the fact that it seems like a lot of very well-read people did advise me that this is a misleading, what is it? It's a resolution. It gives me great pause to vote for something that I don't think, from my understanding, is well-written. Thank you.
Counsel Vacan.
Thank you. I would just note that in the history of my service on this body, we have never refused a hearing or a discussion about an order or a resolution filed by a member of this body. We have entertained motions that pertain to things that have nothing to do with the city at all. One that Counsel Valentin has referenced often that related to the person from Puerto Rico that had been jailed for crimes that we adopted some resolution on. I did not vote for that because I wasn't present at that meeting. But we've entertained, and to her point, spent a year talking about the resolution that she filed, and I'm requesting the same courtesy and consideration from the members of this body relative to the order that I have filed. I am also representing a constituency that shares the view that is filed in this order. I'm not sitting here by myself filing an order. There are people in our community that share the view that I have put in this order. And at least, it deserves to be heard and have points made. I stand by the language in it, and I specifically said some of the proposed changes. I am not putting this forth that it is the totality of the bill. I'm putting forth certain aspects of the bill, and it is available to be read. And for the people that are saying this is inaccurate, I challenge them to show me in that language where what I wrote is inaccurate, because it is accurate. And so I request the consideration from my colleagues that I have given to each and every one of you where I have opposed vehemently a number of the matters that were sent to committee, and yet I gave the respect of having the process work itself through. So, thank you.
Counsel Anderson Burgos.
I don't mean to echo Counselor Leahy, but I, too, am not familiar with the order or, what was it? The HB 3320 and the SB 1209. What I am familiar with is that constituents reached out to me. Not one, but multiple, and not one were for it. They were saying that this is misleading, and I have to listen to them, you know? So I'm going to unfortunately vote no on this.
And can I just make one more comment briefly? And the other note that I would make is people are saying this is a moral issue related to healthcare, and I would totally agree that it's a moral issue. It's a moral issue related to human rights and the right that if you are a baby, a human baby, you have the right to care and comfort. Thank you. Dr. Gosnell is in jail for doing what the New York law has made legal in the state, and it violates federal law. Thank you.
Anyone else? So the motion was to deny? Or was it leave to withdraw?
Just deny.
Motion is to deny. It was seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
No.
No.
I'm going to have to say, show of hands. It was too close. Ear-wise. So, motion is to deny. Voting to deny. You have to raise your hands. So, motion does not carry. Motion now is to go to committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No. Show of hands.
Show of hands.
Oh, go ahead.
So ayes would have it to go to committee.
To go to committee.
It would be five. So, does not carry. So we're back to...
Make a motion to lay on the table.
Motion is to lay on the table. It's seconded. No longer discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
Ayes have it. Want to retract your eye?
Retract which eye?
Which one? Which one? On the table?
So...
Should I reconsider the item?
Motion is to reconsider. It was seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? So, under reconsideration, the last motion was to lay on the table. It was seconded. Is there a motion for that again? Well, yeah, it's reconsidered, so yes. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No. Show of hands.
Show of hands. Motion is to lay on the table. All those in favor? So we're back to, we have Item Twenty-One before us. What is the will of the body?
Make a motion to go to item number 9A.
Back to 9A. Reports of committee. Oops, sorry. Thank you, sir. Commandant Orange is referring to the limit of, the limit on the total amount which can be expended from the revolving fund, which is the Vacan Building Revolver Fund, be amended from 50,000 to 100,000. Recommended that be adopted.
Thank you, Mr. President. So the motion is to pass the first reading?
Motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading. Under discussion, Counsel Vacan.
The committee met, and our, Mr. Cody came in and shared with us the need to increase the ability to use this fund to take care of some of the high, highly-listed, derelict buildings, I guess would be the best way to put it. And he did bring in a visual to show us the particular property that has been discussed as a specific example. But what the committee did was take up the order that would change the ability in the revolving fund to go to the 100,000, and so that it would change the status of the fund so that going forward, that project and other projects could be addressed without having to come back to the council, unless it exceeds the 100,000 point for the project. And so the committee was unanimous in recommending this change to the revolving fund.
Counsel Murphy.
Yeah, first of all, Commissioner Cody did a great job, and it's clear that if you drive the City of Hoyoke, we need to be able to do demolition quicker, not slower. We need to move the process, either rehabbing or removing. Just an example, yesterday with the building on Cabbage Street. I mean, he also talked about 628 Cabbage Street in South Hoyoke, the 107 Clemente Street. So I think what we're doing makes a lot of sense. It's going to make at least that process quicker. But I do think we need to look at the whole picture and try to get to the point where we are doing the buildings that need demolition as quickly as possible.
Counsel Lisi.
Thank you. I just wanted to state for disclosure purposes that my husband is the building commissioner, but I will be voting on this matter because there is no direct financial interest for either of us on this matter. And I just want to echo the points that Counsel Vacan and Counsel Murphy made in that we have a pot of money there. It's accrued over a number of years, and the purpose has been very specifically outlined for demolition and mothballing and, you know, other purposes. And the proposal for the money is neatly and easily within those parameters. And so to me, we want to be able to move more quickly on moving the funds, so putting them to use in the city is a good idea. Thank you.
No further discussion. Motion is passed the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is to pass the second reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the change. The first person going today is Council Leahy. You won again.
I didn't pull it. Leahy?
The change is from, yeah, the change, so the request is changing the revolving fund amount from what you can expend out of 50,000 to 100,000 dollars.
Laborn Martinez?
Yes.
Leacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Wait your vote, you approve the transfer. 9B. Committee on Orange was referred in order that the city department receiving grant money as approved by the city council per master law or any authorized criteria shall within reasonable period of time, but no later than 60 days from the conclusion of said grant, generate a detailed report that matches the planned outcome with the documented results. Report should be submitted to the city clerk and forwarded at the next available city council agenda. Once received and approved, the city council, approved by the city council, the mayor shall have the report posted publicly. Recommended that it be adopted.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to offer an amendment before I offer a motion. The amendment is to add to this that the tracking of the grants will be the responsibility of the administrative assistant to the city council. And then the motion is to receive and pass the first reading.
Second.
Oh, that I can write so fast. All tracking of the grant shall be...
The responsibility of the administrative assistant to the city council. Another spreadsheet, Brian.
Can I ask a question on that topic?
All right, so first, though, the amendment is that we add at the end, all tracking of grants shall be the responsibility of the city council administrator. Is there a second to that?
Second.
That was seconded. Under discussion, Council Leahy then Council Leacy.
Yeah, thank you. I certainly will be very supportive if our administrative assistant gets a raise. I'll certainly vote for that because he has a lot, a lot on his plate. But I'm sure that the different people who are getting these grants, such as Sergeant Hart and whatnot, will be, they'll be there to help you out, I'm sure. And I would encourage that. In fact, anytime they come in front of us with grants, I'm going to make sure that's a stipulation that they work with you on that. So you're not, you know, all alone on this. Thank you.
Council Leacy.
Thank you. I just wanted to note that, first of all, I believe that the administrative assistant to the city council got a raise in the last budget cycle, but I'm not sure if any of the responsibilities had changed. So I think tracking grants are going to be fairly straightforward. It's not, it's not going to be like, you know, you have to monitor what's happening along with the grants. It's just that, okay, this is the date that this grant concludes, and here's a reminder email to whatever agency or office or department received that grant. Within 60 days, you know, this report is due per the ordinance. So it's really just sending out some sort of reminder email at the end of the, at the conclusion of the grant to say, don't forget, you owe us a report within 60 days. I mean, it's not very labor intensive. Thank you.
Anyone else? Council McGivern.
I have no issue if that's what we're asking the administrative assistant to do. I think that's part of the responsibility written in the job description. But unfortunately, the administrative assistant has been asked to be a TV camera person, has been asked to do a stenographer's job for our city, full city council minutes, and been asked to do a number of things that are not part of his job description. And I'm just concerned that the workload to be placed on one individual may get to a point where it's just too much for one individual to complete, and other areas will go, will be affected by it. And I don't know if any discussion has taken place prior to this amendment with the president and with the administrative assistant.
None.
And I want to vote against the amendment until we have that discussion. I second that.
The amendment is on the floor. All, so at the end of the paragraph, "All tracking of grants shall be the responsibility of the city council administrator."
So we could change that perhaps?
That was seconded. So, Council Leacy.
So what if we change it to be more representative of the actual work that we're asking the administrative assistant to take care of? So instead of "all tracking," it would be at the conclusion of a grant that the city council approves, the administrative assistant shall send a reminder email to the receiving body that their report is due within 60 days.
So it's amendment to the amendment?
Just making the language more specific and concrete. Same, same idea, different, more concrete language.
Still under discussion. Council Leahy.
Yeah, thank you. So Council Bartley and I, I took the lead, but Council Bartley and I, who filed this, it was in multiple finance meetings, Sergeant Hart comes in, he gives a report back to the people who give us the shannon grants and the different, and all we were asking for was a copy of the report with the different demographics and kind of disaggregate the data that we're receiving. That's all we're doing. It's already been done by the people who get the reports.
Any further discussion? All right, so currently on the floor is "All tracking of grants shall be the responsibility of the city council administrator." There was a suggestion of changing it, but I still haven't heard a motion or a second, so Council Vacan.
Just to clarify, I think the only reason that we stated it would be with that position was because that was the central point where the grants come in and we could keep a spreadsheet. It wasn't really considered from a workforce thing, but I would totally support our administrative assistant not having to run the TV cameras. I would hope that our media people could do that. But in any event, it was just seen as a logical place. We weren't really looking at it from a workload point of view. It did seem that if we didn't have some point person in some department responsible, that we could pass this ordinance, but it would just be another piece of paper in the ordinance book, and then, you know, the tracking wouldn't exist anywhere. So that was the thinking of the committee behind it, so that it would actually have a better opportunity of happening.
Would it be better, so the committee on Orange was referred in order that the city department receiving grant money as approved by the city council per master law or any other authorized criteria, shall be responsible, shall within a reasonable period of time but no later than 60 days from the conclusion of said grant, generate a detailed report that matches the planned outcome and documented results. That department shall send the report to the city administration after 60 days?
Well, it just occurred to me that, similar to the Bartley amendment that we made on some contractual things, we could put it into the grant approval that the department receiving the grant would agree to provide the report as you just read. That would be another way of accomplishing it.
So they're just forwarding it off to him? The issue is, which would be outstanding, is the 60 days up, and Ryan does not know. So that's a way, I mean, you have to...
It would put it on the grant receiver to know and to file the report, but then it would be up to us to figure out if they hadn't. But we could put it on to, you know, as part of the approval of the grant.
Do it that way, too.
Does that...
Yeah, that's what I was trying to hear as well.
All right, then I would offer that as an amendment in place of the amendment that I offered, putting it with the administrative assistant.
So you were drawing your amendment. Your amendment was "All tracking of grants shall be responsibility of the city council administrator." You were withdrawing that one?
And in place of it, offer language that says the receiver of the grant will, shall provide the report as specified in this ordinance. I don't know, Crystal, if there's better words. We can suspend the rules and let Crystal give us better words.
So, "All grants shall require language that the receiver of the grant provide a copy to the city council administrator of the detailed report."
Right.
You don't have to say. I'm just trying to capture what I heard. So that, that's what you want? That was seconded.
If it's good with the maker.
Any further discussion?
I'm just going to ask you to change receiver until recipient. I think that makes more sense because I think receiver might have a specific title.
That "All grants shall require language that the recipient to provide a copy to the city council administrator after..."
Later than the 60 days noted in the...
After the 60 days. Is that good? Is that what you want? That was seconded. Yes, in my beautiful chicken scratch. So, on that amendment, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
So now the motion is to pass the first reading as amended.
Motion is to pass the first reading as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion is that the passage be ordained. The clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the language as amended.
Leahy?
Yes.
Laborn Martinez?
Yes.
Leacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Vacan?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
For your vote, you approve it.
Can I just make one comment?
Yes, Council Vacan.
So, this will go into effect after the passage tonight, but we are requesting that the recipients of this year's grants also please submit the reports to the council at the conclusion of the grants this year. It's a request. Thank you.
Okay. 9C. Committee on Orange was referred in order that sign be placed at city entrance and intersections which read, "Please donate only to recognized charities." Recommend that the order be adopted.
So, as this order pertains, we have had this in ordinance committee, this topic, this issue, this concern for four, five, six years now. We came forth with a bunch of recommendations. They were never implemented. Then a task force was put together almost two years ago now that met once, so we took up the orders that had been filed in the jacket at our last meeting. And I believe we had agreement on this one. I can't remember, I didn't see the signatures on the jacket. So we're, there have been increased concerns noted by the public relative to this activity, and also, along with that, the concerns for the conditions of the people that are doing the activity, as well as the frustration of the police department and the social service agencies that have personally reached out to all of these people periodically, to the extent that 80 to 90% of the time their offers are refused. So, going back to the drawing board, this particular order where we're talking about asking the people who are giving the money to donate to recognized charities that have a track record of actually providing care, support, intervention to the people, rather than money that has been documented often goes to continued use of either substance or of one sort or another, that does not really improve the situation for the person that's seeking the money or the people giving them the money. So this was seen as a positive way to encourage people to give the money to the places that would actually help the people in their stated needs in the community, and at the same time, hopefully make the community feel welcoming to people coming from the outside and making our businesses and intersections safe for the people traveling in them and for our folks who are doing business in the city. So this was seen as, hopefully, a more positive approach to addressing the matter, and it is recommended to be put in ordinance form similar to the stop signs, so that upon passage, these signs would be put up. But I'll defer to the maker of the order if he would like to, if, through the president.
Council Sullivan?
Thank you. Now, Council Vacan's done a very good job of summing it up. The one extra point I would like to touch on is, you know, we've heard over the years from the chief, 90, 90%, I think was the number given us, our people suffering from addiction. I don't dispute, there's some people that are just down on their luck, and we're not, in this wording now, we're not targeting any particular person or group of people. We're just suggesting to the public how to approach the situation. The, the, one thing I can say for certain is we're making it too easy for people to continue not to seek help by allowing this venue to go unchecked. And other communities have taken some steps. They have put up signage. They have had some positive results. If the result of this is that some of these people now, it becomes a little more difficult, and they do seek help, we'll be doing much better for them as well. I've also, I've got to say, I've heard from a lot of people, a lot of constituents, and it is snowballed out of control and are doing nothing. We've got to take some approach. And the two examples I'm going to give are the most egregious ones I can think of. And the person has told me, it's fine to use his name, he couldn't be here to speak tonight, but Jonathan Mokwin Jr. was with his children in the car on High Street in Hoyoke, right, when a person with a cardboard sign sitting in a recliner announced with his windows down so his kids in the car could hear it, "Time to shoot up." And I've heard from the firefighters at the station up across from Lynch, and anybody that wants to dispute this can drive up there tonight and hold your breath when you go to take a look at the X that they've made with the sticks where they go and defecate. We've got to put a stop to this or take some measures to show the public that we are trying to do something.
Council Murphy.
Yeah, I commend Council Sullivan because I think what he tried to do is put together a compassionate signage attempt to let people know that we're not against trying to help people, but we have charities that can provide services to those people. And I agree with him. I think there are people that would potentially start to go to those services if they were not getting assistance waiting at the, at the various traffic stops. And it's, you know, whether it's an addiction or any other issue, homelessness, whatever, we have a number of charities in the city and in the state, and if we support those and we can get people to go to those, it may be hard love to start with, but the hard love may end up giving them the incentive to go and, and meet with somebody and try to do something. So, I mean, what we're doing right now is not working. We're supporting people, and they're just coming back day in and day out. I, in my ward, I do see frequent trash bags of things that are left there as if it was luggage, and they come back the next day, I'm assuming, and start over again. But, you know, I think we have to do something. I think this is an attempt to do it compassionately, and I certainly endorse it.
Council Valentin.
Thank you. When we first started to talk about this, I do remember some of the language that was shared here in chambers regarding the folks that are on the street asking for money and doing whatever it is they're doing. And at that time, the makeup of the body was a little bit different, but most of us were here and we're still here. And I've, I've always voted against these. I don't think that, that this is really the solution. I think this is an attempt to, for a Band-Aid to a way bigger issue that we can, you know, spend hours talking about. So I'm not sure how 9E is going to be discussed because I just see that it says that it's been complied with, and so I look forward to hearing how that one is, is going to be discussed. But in terms of 9C and possibly 9E as well, I'll be voting against these. I don't think that this is really the solution for something like this. Thank you.
Council Leahy?
Yeah, thank you. So I, I've been always taking this as a different approach than, we've been talking about this over the years, and I've always taken the approach that this is human trafficking. This is no different than I think that these massage plowers and, and these young ladies who are getting trafficked throughout the world. I think this is awful. I think these people are, as, I don't have the stats, but Council Sullivan just said 90% are addiction. I think a lot of them have depression as well. I think that goes hand in hand. And I feel extremely bad for any person that stands out there for a dollar here, a dollar there. It wasn't until a few years back, my son Brendan, he sent me a song on his playlist, "You Don't Know Jack." The name of the song is "You Don't Know Jack." It's by Luke Bryan, and it just talks about homelessness and the compassion that we should have for these people. And I did file an order, and I was asked, I wanted to go to the district attorney's office, and I got asked at that time not to proceed it because there's, I believe there's some investigations going on regarding that, so I didn't. But I think it's too organized. I think it's, I think it's too organized. You don't see people fighting over different territories or terrfs. I think it's, I think it's a huge form of human trafficking, and I certainly feel bad for the people who are, who are stuck doing this to make other people wealthy. And I, I think there's no other proposals. No one else has come up with any ideas. So I think that this is a humane way of just asking people to donate to, to other charities. Thank you.
Council Leacy.
Thank you. I voted in committee to support this, and I will be supporting this ordinance or order this evening. You know, panhandling is an age-old vocation. I don't think we're ever going to do anything to completely get rid of panhandling. And I do think that there are a number of agencies in the community that are doing their best to reach out to this population who may be asking for money for a variety of different reasons. I have a very different, I guess, view of this language. To me, this language is not so much for the panhandlers, but for the people that need to figure out in their own minds a way to not contribute and not feel badly about themselves. I think that a lot of the anger and despair and anxiety that the people giving money feel when they see panhandlers and they can't give can actually be, you know, mitigated to some extent by having the sign there. I think it gives people an out. It gets people off the hook so that they don't have to feel bad about not wanting to contribute or not donating, and I think that that's, that's important at this point in time. I think we need to, you know, figure out other ways of reaching this population, to figure out what the panhandling population, to figure out, you know, why they're there and what resources they may need. But really, they're there out of their own free will, we would assume. And really, I think some of, some of the... And really, I think some of, some of the language in this sign, it just gives people an out, a way to get off the hook so that they don't feel badly about themselves. And, and I'll support it for that reason.
Counselor McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. I have no argument with the message. It's a good message. It's the correct message. I think we're all frustrated by the panhandling situation and the lack of being able to enforce the items like Counselor Leahy talks about and the items that we know are going out there that are not what panhandling is supposed to be about and do cause problems for our, for our constituency and for, for drivers of vehicles. My only issue is, is not, and again, not with the message, but with another sign. We don't need more signs. Intersections are, are already clogged with signs that tell drivers what lane to be in, what lane not to be in, depending on what their next, next move is as far as driving. Stop, go, pedestrian crosswalks. There's a lot of activity at an intersection for a driver that's far more important than trying to read this message as a panhandler is standing underneath the sign. I would favor taking the same message and plastering it on our website, plastering it on the public access channel and doing educational things out in the community about why this makes far more sense, as Counselor Murphy said, than giving, you know, directly to an individual who's in need. I just can't vote for another sign, especially in these intersections as they were outlined in the email, that are very busy and very active in terms of drivers and I think the drivers should be paying attention to traffic signs and not to messages, even, even correct messages.
Counselor LaBra Martinez and Counselor Bacon?
I, one of those who is very frustrated about this situation as I get all these emails. I've even gotten people come and knock on my door and bring me to areas that they want me to see of what's happening. This is frustrating situation at this point and, and someone that, at the same time, I'm hard, you know, it hurts me to, to see this because I had a brother in this situation at one point in my life. He's no longer living, but it, it also is frustrating. I mean, if you look at right, right now at the corner of High Street and Cabot Street, this is the gateway. I just have families to come down from New Jersey and, and they're joking about a toll payment and I'm like, "What are you talking about?" And says, "I had to pay a toll right on the corner there and I'm, I didn't know what they were meaning." And it was that, this is the first thing they saw and they've never been here. And also the kids, you know, this is what they're seeing and it's sad to see this situation. I would rather see that the city goes after forming coalitions where we can try to take care of this epidemic that is really leading to this situation because if you guys seen what I posted on, on the news, I took a walk to these places with, and approached some of these individuals and talked to them about, you know, what kind of service they need and whatnot. And bluntly, one told me that, because I said, you know, "I work where I can probably get you a job if this is the situation because you're saying you're homeless. You have a sign saying you're homeless." And bluntly told me he makes more money at the corner than getting a job. I understand that that kind of conversation was because there's an addiction, there's no way he's going to be able to work, right? But my point to this is that this is more than a sign. It's more, it's, it's, I think, a coalition forming here in the city, trying to go after a grant, that we really have somebody on the street doing this every day, making sure we will move them out of the corner, making sure that they're doing the littering, they got to pick it up and take care of it. I got pictures here that I took care of McDonald's corner with one of the officers who was, who approached a person and made sure that they cleaned up after themselves because it was a huge mess. And, you know, this is the kind of, kind of reputation we're getting in the city too with this mess that it's being left behind. So, it's a little bit of everything and with a lot of compassion. What I say on my, on my Facebook post was feed them if they're hungry, help them if they need shelter, if they need to go into a, a recovering or due to addiction, support that, but do not give the money because I think that's what's leading. And guess what? If you have a chance and you haven't done it, do it. Most of these people don't live here. They don't, they're not from Hoyoke. Not, most of them are not from Hoyoke. So, that's, that's another thing. That's attracting people from other places coming here because it's allowed.
The only point I wanted to make is that I, I do hear Counselor McGivern's point about yet another sign. However, unfortunately, people have plenty of time to read this sign because often the light is green and the traffic is stopped because the people are giving money to the person standing in the median. So, the traffic's already held up. The sign isn't holding it up. The activity is holding it up. So, I think we need to try to do something. For six years, we've sat here and said, "We can't do anything." I think we need to try something. And so, I support this as a first step. It's certainly not the only step. And we know for the folks that are putting themselves forth as veterans that we have a very active veterans leader who has gone out personally to speak with these people. And occasionally, I see some postings indicate that we don't have services here. We have services here if people choose to accept them. And unfortunately, they do have rules which many of the people don't want to comply with. So, that part is a choice. So, I would urge my colleagues to support this and I'd make the motion to pass the first reading.
Just, Ryan gave us the list of where the signs will be. There'll be 12 signs total. Corner of Cherry and Hillside, Hamden and Pleasant, High Street and Resnick Boulevard, Hoyoke Street, Hoyoke Crossing, Lower Westfield Road, crossing with Hoyoke Street, Main Street and the 391 exit five off-ramp, Main Street and South Street, Maple Street and Norfolk Street. And the next ones are for North Hampton Street. So, one, two, three, four, North Hampton Street, Whiting Farms Road, Whiting Farms Road, East Hampton Road and Hamden Street. Those are the cross streets. So, 12 signs total. Just, that came in as the legal.
Thank you for adding that.
Counselor Martinez?
Yeah, I wonder if there could be like some type of a link where people would know which, like which organizations to kind of donate to because that's just like a sign and where, where would they know that they want to support? You know what I mean? Like a list of places that people can know where to support.
Counselor Lacy?
Thanks. I, I think, you know, in previous iterations, there were suggestions that, you know, we create a website and, and have all these different charities there, but, but I think at this point in time, we don't want to play favorites.
Yeah.
We want to just say, you know, donate only to recognized charities. And if in your mind, you're donating to somebody, then I, I feel like that may be able to satisfy folks and, and let them feel like they're, they're doing their part in some way. And again, I don't think that this is going to solve the panhandling problem, but I, I think it may, you know, help to, yeah, just kind of, you know, mitigate some of the, the anger and, yeah, yeah, that's it.
Counselor Tomlin?
Please?
Yeah, I, this is definitely something I think that we should approve tonight. It's, it's the start. It's not, not the answer. It's, it's, all of us encounter people out there in the streets totally every day. Wherever we drive, you're going to see somebody, two or three or four. And I think some of the areas and our colleagues talked about High and Cabot Street. I just, I, I saw that and the guy's just sitting there and there's trash all over there and then his basket or whatever. It's just, it's really unsanitary. You know, you see that people coming down to town and, and a lot of them up here, up by the firehouse and where other places now they have the big blue bins, you know, with stuff in there. And I don't know what, how, how they got them, if that's legal or they keep all their stuff in there and it, and people see that coming into town. I mean, it's, I don't know how we can get rid of them. But, you know, and I think any of us see somebody, we feel for them. But, you know, when I see somebody, if I can, if I have water in my car or I can go get a, a sandwich or a snack, you know, I try to do that. And other people, you know, they feel their way of is giving a dollar or two dollars or some people give five dollars. I was up by Denny's one time and three, two cars in front of me, the people in the front seat, the backseat, and then the next car gave the guy, it must've been about $10, just within two minutes. So, they are making money and was it about a year ago, I, I talked to one of the gentlemen that was up by Hamden and Pleasant and, and had a coffee with him up at, up at Dunkin' Donuts and, you know, he, a lot of these people don't want to get help. You ask them, "We can get you into shelter. We can get you help." And a lot of people don't want to follow rules. They don't want to be in a system where they have to, you know, be somewhere at a certain time. They have to go out and look for work or whatever. And it's, it's sad, but I have to commend my, my colleague, Counselor Sullivan, that trying to do something. But I think we all have to be aware that this is just a beginning. This is just a start and I think we all have to, to really reach, reach deep down and, and say, "What can we do to, to make this, this city, you know, more, more safe and more cleaner for, for everybody?" You know?
Counselor Martinez, you had a question?
Yeah, I, I just want to comment in regards to the signs. I think that for someone who's never been here and starts to see signs like this, imagine someone wanting to come and buy a home here, opening a business and all you see is signs give to charities instead of, of the people that are in the corners. What does that tell you? I mean, that is the only thing that I feel that having more signs like this is not helping our city at all.
Counselor Sullivan?
Okay, thank you. Through the chair, through the president. We're, we're not telling anybody not to give money to the people standing there, all right? We're requesting that they give to recognized charities, people that can help them. By ignoring the situation, by doing nothing, I'm going to stop short of the assisted suicide speech I've got pocketed away here, all right? But you're, you're making it easy, easy for them not to get the help they need, not to take the right route. And Hoyoke has become a magnet for this type of behavior, an absolute magnet for it, worse than any other community around us.
There's no further discussion. Motion was to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is to pass the second reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Motion that the passage be ordained. The clerk will call a row. If you vote yes, you're voting for the signs.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lacy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
No.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentin?
No.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Nine Ys, two Ns.
With your vote, you approve the ordinance. Nine D, Committee on Orders, who was referred an order that a single disbursement from the, where did this one? Oh, no, I'm sorry. Yeah, yeah, this is what it's for. All right. I saw the hundred thousand, like, we just did this. I know I can't read anymore. I can't see. But the vacant building fund and the amount of a hundred thousand be utilized for 107 Clemente Street.
So, the motion is to receive and adopt the committee report that this has been complied with because the use of the fund in itself was changed.
Motion has been complied with under discussion, Counselor Lacy?
And motion, receive and adopt the committee report.
And just to further clarify, so the, the idea of what we did in nine A is that we set the cap for the specific restricted uses at a hundred thousand dollars before they have to come to city council for approval. So, now that this Clemente Street is within that cap, there's no need for an explicit council approval.
So, motion is to receive, adopt, that it's been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Nine E, the Committee on Orders was referred, an order to create an ordinance to post signs similar to ones below, say no to panhandlers along business corridors at major intersections or it's been complied with.
Receive and adopt the committee report?
Second.
Motion is receive, adopt the committee report that's been complied with under discussion, Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. So, the committee was being kind. They could've said, "Give leave to withdraw," but because we came up with different language and the orders were similar and that we were recommending to adopt the order filed by Counselors, the new and improved order filed by Counselor Sullivan, that the committee just offered to call it complied with in that the matter was addressed.
So, motion is to receive, adopt, that was complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
The Committee on Finance, we're off to finance now. That was the end of ordinance.
Take a motion to suspend the rules that take 10A and 10B together, please.
Second.
Well, suspend the rules, take items 10A and 10B of which... This is the one I'm not supposed to be...
Correct.
So, I'm not touching these. Just kidding. So, they're on fire. So, I'll put these up here. There, I, I do have a conflict with these, so I will remove myself from here and go into the back room and turn it over to either Counselor McGivern or Counselor Tomlin.
I'd like to make the report. Counselor Tomlin, would you do the honors?
Happy to.
If no one else objects? Motion be to do 10A and 10B together.
So, move, a motion to take items 10A and 10B together?
Yes, please.
Okay. All in favor?
No. I'd like to vote on them separately if we can.
They would be separate votes.
Okay.
But it's...
For discussion?
Yeah, there's a reason and I'll explain as I give the committee report. So, if I could, Mr. President, our first vote will be on 10B and that would be to pass the first reading. And the committee report, the committee met on both these items, took them up together because the 10A is simply allowing for prior year bills to be paid. And the, as noted at the committee meeting with our auditor, this request combines, similar request, but combines two different, two different individuals. And I'll quickly explain this for anyone who didn't make the finance committee meeting and be happy to answer questions. The 250, the transfer is 600, $6,100 from payhead administrative clerk. That is the item, the vacant position within the auditors. There are two requests to use that this evening before us. If both pass, that will exhaust that line item. The auditor is still hesitating, or not hesitating, but with a good reason, waiting to fill that position until she knows how she wants to see her office proceed and the type of person, individual skills that she wants to hire. The, as far as where the money is going, there's $250 would go to, to the Board of Health for board members. A request went to, first to our Human Resource Director, Jesus, I'm sorry, to Hector, for the, from the Board of Health Department, from an individual who is now the vice chair of the Board of Health Commission. He was hired in March of 2018, has attended the board meetings, was appointed to vice chair at some point and recently found out that there was a stipend that he was not receiving. No one had sent him to the personnel department and to the treasurer department to sign up and they like to correct that. The stipend is more than $250 owed. However, there is money within that, within the line item that will pay the bulk of what is owed the individual. The 250 is just the balance so that he is made whole from March of last, last year. And then, of course, because it's last year, last year's budget for part of it, the adopting of 10A would allow, would allow the money to be used from this year's monies to pay for some money that was owed last year. The second amount, the, it is combined in one, one transfer request. The second amount is $5,850. A similar request went to the, went to the, the treasurer's department and to the auditor that a law that has been in effect for many years, a state law, which is Mass General Law's 41, Section 19G, just in a, in a, in a brief review, is that a clerk of a city or town who also serves as a member of its board of registers shall, in addition to any compensation to which he or she may be entitled as a city-town clerk, receive a sum of $50 and if the number of registered voters exceeds 1,000, an additional $50 for each additional 1,000 up until a cap of 1,500. This Mass General Law has been in effect since our city court... a cap of fifteen hundred. Uh, this Mass General Law has been in effect since our city clerk, Brenda Murphy McGee, has, has become, um, was elected, her first year was a, uh, would have been six, six months of the fiscal year due until that we start our, our terms in January, and then she be owed, uh, since then. Uh, our city clerk put the request in, the auditor did the research, uh, at the finance committee meeting, we discussed a number of different items as to the fairness of both of these requests. Um, the, uh, there are some concerns, and there were some good questions that were asked, but essentially what it came down to is that, and then I might have to say, I don't, it wasn't at a, no, it wasn't unanimous, I'm sorry, um, it came down to, uh, that the, um, both these individuals are owed this money for services rendered. Uh, in the case of the city clerk, uh, it is a salary position, which is a, a position, um, that is due, and we've, we've talked about this before, there are different avenues of revenue, not just for the city court, but for a number of our department heads where they are paid from different revenue source, uh, sources, such as the DPW Superintendent and, uh, Fire Chief and other, other positions similar. So the, the, the issue is not unprecedented to pay the money that is owed. Um, the Mass General Law is, uh, is the first, um, that has been brought to the attention for the first time for a city clerk, and the committee recommended on a vote of, uh, fi- four to zero, that we, we adopted the transfer so that both the stipend for the vice chair of the Board of Health and the city court be made whole.
Any further discussion? Counselor Lisi.
Thank you. Um, I don't have the exact numbers in front of me, but I'm just going to say, I, I really feel that in terms of the, um, 10B and the payhead administrative clerk, um, you know, we're, I, I don't mind adopting the Mass General Law and paying moving forward, but to say that, um, this money is due for services rendered when, um, it is a salaried position and the salary was, uh, taken, and, um, there's been a number of years where we've had, uh, the same clerk in, in, in this position. Uh, I, I can't see giving back pay. I'm happy to say, like, let's adopt, um, the, that, um, statute within Mass General Law and move forward paying that, that sum of money, but to say that for the past six years or so, um, someone's been doing this work, um, free of charge and that we, we owe them, I think is, is a stretch. So, um, I, I don't think I can support that number. I'd be happy to support, um, beginning to pay for the, these services because there is an opportunity to pay, but I don't think that there's an obligation to pay, especially, uh, retrospectively.
Counselor McGivern?
Uh, we, we discussed that in committee also, and that's why I emphasized the word "shall." Um, and, and the reason it's the word "shall" is, we're not, there's nothing before us that says we're adopting the Mass General Law. Mass General Law is Mass General Law. The, the, the issue is, is no one in, no prior city clerk and nobody, nobody in the, uh, the administration of, of the city ever understood or knew that this law existed, and that's why prior city clerks are, why our current city clerk was not paid the money that should be coming to her. Over this period of time, I think it goes back to, uh, Mayor Sullivan, not only is the city clerk servant of Board of Registers, and not only are they, they work closely with the Board, with the Register of Voters, at, at a point, and I believe it was under Mayor Sullivan, I could be wrong, we actually combined these departments, making it even more the job of the city clerk to, uh, to oversee the entire department itself. Um, it sounds like a lot of money upfront because it goes back a couple of years, however, when you look at it, it's not a lot of money for the amount of work that is done. It is just compensation for recognizing what the, whoever the city clerk is for what their responsibilities are. It's not a question, it is their responsibilities. This law doesn't have to be accepted, it is law.
Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, I, I did attend the meeting, and I'll happily stand corrected if I, um, misinterpreted something at the meeting. My understanding was that the law was discovered at sometime recently, in terms of the request coming forth that it be paid retroactively. Um, and if I recall correctly, there was also a statute referenced, where when something is discovered of this nature, where we do owe the person money under a law that we just were unaware of, that there is a limit to the liability to the city of three years. And so I do believe the city should be compliant with the law, and ignorance is not bliss. Um, but I also think that when we're in tight economic times, we should not incur more liability for the city than would be reasonable under the statute, and the statute, as I recall, being shared by legal was three years. So I would happily support, because I do think we should be compliant, um, going back three years, but my understanding is this goes back over five years, and so I share with Counselor Lisi a struggle relative to that. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, the, this, uh, Counselor Lisi.
I just want to apologize, sorry. I want to apologize to my colleagues that I haven't been able to make that finance meeting that evening. There was another, um, meeting that I, that I was attending. Um, but if we could suspend the rules and, um, ask legal to just, um, talk about this opinion?
Second.
Motion to suspend the rules?
All in...
All in favor?
Aye.
Attorney, can you remind me of your, your last name?
It's Perro, P-A-R-O.
Thank you, Perro, Attorney Perro. Um, so there's, uh, this bolded section in the middle that talks about notwithstanding the limitation in section nineteen G in a city or town which accepts this section. So can you, can you just provide some clarification about what that means, that language there?
Sure. Well, I put that there to basically show the differences between, um, a statute that states "shall," which is a mandatory provision, and a statute that says which accept, which accepts this provision, which is based on a city accepting it in the city council. Um, so basically, the, um, nineteen G is a "shall," it is, you know, um, the person shall receive the compensation. However, nineteen G, um, if, is, i-if it's accepted by the city, um, increases the fifteen hundred, I believe, to a, uh, two thousand dollar limit. So it was, it's really just there for comparison's sake.
Um, and so, to the point that Counselor McGivern was making, we don't have to, um, accept or adopt a Mass General Law of this sort in order to, um, come into compliance with it?
Not for nineteen G, no. Nineteen G is a mandatory provision.
And then, so it's the nineteen H part that is the not mandatory?
That's correct. If the city decided to increase the compensation, they could increase it to two thousand.
Yeah, I mean, so then, and then I also see the, the three-year statute of limitations. So going back three years, we, we, we are obligated the fifty-dollar compensation a year, is, is what I understand.
What I put there is basically saying that somebody can't come back, um, ten years later and try to sue the city, saying that I should have received all this compensation. Um, so it doesn't necessarily mean that we shouldn't pay our current clerk for five years, it's just basically saying that somebody can't come back and sue the city and say, I should have been receiving this pay for, you know, all these years. So, I mean, I guess you can read it literally and say that you, you're only legally obligated to pay for three years, but I think the opinion of everybody was the fact that this individual is our current clerk. Um, everybody's very satisfied with her role, and everybody felt that ethically the five years should be paid because it is compensation that was due to her, and it was a mistake, and she should be made whole.
Thank you for, for the clarification. Um, I, you know, I'm, I'm just going to reiterate the point. I do, um, I think that our clerk does a really great job. I think that we should be paying, um, forthwith, um, you know, certainly the fifty-dollar, uh, amount, and then, um, I'd be happy to support an order to, uh, say that we'll be accepting nineteen H and paying, uh, two thousand dollars forthwith, but to, to say, going back, um, a, a number of years, uh, that, that, that feels difficult to swallow.
Can I just correct one thing? Nineteen H, um, well, the, first of all, the compensation isn't based on, it's based on how many thousands of registered voters there are, so in a city our size, it, it wouldn't get up to two thousand dollars anyway. This sets a fifteen hundred dollar limit. So in other words, I think, I, I think we had, like, twenty-eight thousand voters, I think that equaled, um, less than fifteen hundred a year. I think it equaled about twelve hundred a year. Does that make sense?
It was thirteen fifty.
Thirteen fifty.
Thank you.
So we can't, we can't increase it to two thousand unless we have a good amount of people move here in the next few months.
Yeah, I mean, a, a, again, I'm just going to state that, uh, I will not be able to support this order the way it's written if, um, the mayor wants to forward an appropriation for an amount, um, that's, that's less, that, that's more representative of, um, you know, you know, just, I, I would rather say, I'm happy to do this moving forward. Um, I think that if there's a three-year statute of limitations and, um, you know, legally, we, we should cover those three years in terms of, uh, the, the pay that's due for services rendered, but, uh, you know, it, it, it's, it's really hard to swallow that, you know, we have to back pay for, for six years of, of, of non-payment when it's being brought to our attention only for the first time now.
This being a, oh, Counselor, uh, Counselor Murphy?
Yeah, just, uh, a couple of points, if I'm hearing all of this correctly, and I paid attention during the committee meeting, but we are obligated for sure to pay for at least three years. We have a choice if we wanted to pay more. I mean, I think that's, that's, that's our option here. Uh, you know, if we were talking, uh, a substantial, a substantial, substantial amount of money, I might be a little more hesitant to do so, but, uh, everybody seems to agree. I'm just, only three months of working with her, she certainly has, seemed like she's doing a good job, and obviously, we're, we're in financially tight situations, but through no fault of our own, she did work that she could have gotten paid for and didn't. Clearly, for some reason, it, with city registrar, clerk situation has fallen through the cracks, as a few other situations in the city have fallen through the cracks, and I'm not, I don't think she should be punished for that. But I do think it's, I, my math keeps getting me back here, and it was the other day when I said, it's thirteen fifty a year, so if it was three years, it's four, four thousand and fifty, and, as I said the other day, I don't know how we came to five thousand eight hundred and fifty, but, uh, other than that, I mean, we could be here for a long time arguing about two thousand dollars whether it's worth it or not. I can understand the argument that it's a three-year statute of limitations, that's all we should pay. Uh, but on the other hand, I also believe if we know we could have been obligated to pay it, we got someone doing a good job, trying to find a way to keep morale in the city up, it makes sense to me to pay, so I'm going to vote for it.
Thank you. I, I'm looking at this transfer, and I, I believe it's something that we have to vote either up or down, the amount, so, um, I mean, uh, the work has been done by the, by the city clerk over the years, and it's, it's up to us to make that decision. But I feel that, uh, she's done the work, we found the provision, we sought, found the law that, uh, the money, um, is due her, I'm, and, um, I believe that this is, uh, something that we, two, two weeks ago, we talked about it and was sent to committee, uh, because we weren't ready to vote on it, and we took it to committee, we discussed it for probably about a half an hour. Um, our, our chairman discussed, uh, tonight, explained everything the way, um, it should be explained, so, um, we go from here now. Counsel, on the motion, Counselor McGivern?
Just one, one final thought, and I don't want to be redundant, but, you know, as I stated, we, our city clerk sits here with us for sometimes four to six hours on a Tuesday night twice a month, and, and that's part of her job, and that's part of what the state also dictates she does, and there's a stipend for that. You know, this, this is even more, I think, important that she's paid for what she does with the Register of Voters because her, not only is her office linked with the Register of Voters, but think of what it's like when, when anybody who wants to run for election, who's the first place they go to? The Register of Voters, a voting list, what's out there, who are, who are the voters? What is going on there? Let's make sure there's no fraud going on, let's make sure there's a lot of things that have to be paid attention to, in terms of political parties, in terms of how government works and how elections work. And the, the law is clear, it's, it's, it's not, you can, you do pay the city clerk who sits on the Board of Registers the, the amount of money that, that is owed. I understand, we did talk about going beyond three years. My understanding at the finance committee level was that adopting this this evening would allow us to go beyond those three years, it was our choice, and that's the rec, that was the recommendation of the Committee on Finance. But I, I, I respect the difference of opinions, but I think this is, is in nature, money that's coming to someone who has not only performed a job, but performed a job very well.
Motion, Counselor? Oh, uh, Counsel Anderson, Counsel Anderson Burgos?
I just want to remind everyone that it wasn't too long ago when we were talking about, um, pay raises and quality of work and so on and so forth, and I think this is the time where we can make that present, and I, I truly believe that, um, our city clerk works day in and day out, and she truly deserves this, and, um, I hope we consider this, I really do.
Counselor Lisi?
Thanks. Just to that point, I, I mean, it's a perfect opportunity to raise, uh, the fact that there is, uh, a salary study out there that would give, uh, the clerk, um, I believe it was a five thousand dollar raise or so, maybe it was even up to ten thousand, I can't remember. Um, but the salary study would apply evenly and with an, uh, objective, uh, disposition, raises across the board, not just cherry picking individuals. I don't consider this a raise, first of all. I, I, I understand that there is a, a statute obligation here, but I, again, to, to go back, you know, five or six years just sounds like, i-it's a lot to ask. I mean, there, there was an oversight on multiple parties, and to, to say that, you know, we, we're now obligated to go back the, the full amount of time, then, you know, I, I just don't, I just don't see it that way.
Counselor Bacon?
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, so, I take all the points in, and I think it was, I have in a, in a draft, um, file, an order that I was going to file that I talked with our clerk about in terms of cleaning up our voters list, because over time, you get a lot of changes and moves and people that have come and gone. Um, so, I'm in the club of, on the one hand, not wanting to go back more than three years, and on the other hand, seeing the fairness of the pay for work done, and so I will be voting for this back pay tonight, but I will also be filing my order to make sure the voter list is cleaned up with the census. So, I'll be guilt free in filing that order. Thank you.
Are we still taking up, uh, 10A and 10B? Would we do that separately, or?
Well, Mr. President, if we could do the votes separate, 10B would be first. If it passes, then we have to authorize, by adopting 10A, we would be authorizing the prior year out of this year's money.
Okay, for, uh, for 10B, uh, the Committee on Finance have referred to an order that there be, and hereby appropriated by transfer in fiscal year 2019, um, six thousand one hundred as follows, from payhead administration clerk sixty-one hundred dollars to board members, Board of Health, two hundred and fifty dollars, Commissioner, Board of Registars, five thousand eight hundred fifty dollars.
And a motion be to pass the first reading?
All in favor?
Aye. Take a motion to pass the, uh, second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm just unclear, did, did you put them, was, is that a vote for both of them, or just for the?
For?
It's, it's one.
10B.
As I stated earlier, there, it's, it's one transfer, combined for two different positions. We have, we can't separate it because it's a transfer, and we cannot amend the transfer.
So it's 10A and B?
Yeah.
Roll, clerk, take a roll call?
Yeah, you need a roll call.
Roll call?
Mm-hmm.
And this is 10B we're talking about?
Oh, 10?
10B.
10B, roll call.
10A and B. Leahy?
That's what I just asked.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi? Just under, um, you know, I, I asked if it was 10A and B.
My, my apologies, I thought you were talking about the Board of Health and the city clerk being together.
So we're just voting on B at this point in time?
B at this point.
10B.
There's no need for 10A unless B, B passes.
Okay, thank you. Um, so now.
McGee abstain. McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
You pass the fin-
Nine yeas, one nay, and one abstain.
Pass the financial transfer.
Thank you.
10A? 10A?
What was the final vote?
Nine, one, and one. Nine, nine, nine passed, a one no, and one abstained.
Thank you. Sorry, my, my ears are clogged up a little. And if we couldn't, Mr. President, 10A, the motion would just be to adopt, and that's just allowing prior year bills to be paid out of this year's budget.
Second.
Second.
Motion, 10A, is committee on finance referred to an order that the amount of $250 be authorized from the audit board of health, board of registers, department pay, board of health, 6,000, 6,100 be authorized from pay commissioners, board of registers appropriation in fiscal year 2019 for services rendered in fiscal year 2018, which were unencumbered at the end of 2018 fiscal year, and have considered the same, and recommend that the order be adopted. All in favor?
Aye.
I think we have to roll.
Roll call now? Okay, roll call.
Leahy? Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
Leece?
Yes.
McGee? Oh, McGee's abstaining. McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Motion passed. Next one, can I get him back in here?
You, you can get him back in here.
Can I stick up here for a little bit longer? Can I try the gavel?
Just don't ask him to go anywhere.
I need a little bit more practice at this, but we'll get to it.
Did a fine job, Councilor Tomlin.
Good job.
Yeah, he looks like a natural fit.
10C, the committee on finance referred an order, transfer of 13,000 from head administrative clerk to professional services, recommended that be adopted.
Take a motion received, passed the first reading.
Motion received, adopt, passed first reading, and a discussion, Councilor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, this would be from the head administrative clerk, that position, same position in the auditor's office we were talking about. If this is adopted, that would exhaust the line item for all essential purposes for this year. The auditor is in agreement with that, the reason being is, if you remember, I think it was Councilor McGee's order, some, not too long ago, that we look to continue to give some consulting and help to our new auditor, who's doing, I think we all agree, a fine job, but is still in a learning curve. And we've learned that sometimes those learning curves can be tough, especially when curveballs become fastballs. So the purpose of this order would be to allow the auditor to, to bring in a person who I think most of us are familiar with, a former city auditor, to consult on some of the upcoming issues as the city will, the city auditor's office will be facing, and that would be Brian Smith. So by adopting this, we will put $13,000 out of that line item into professional services, and allow the auditor to use Mr. Smith when needed to, to get through some of the, the end of year stuff, such as the, the city audit and other things in terms of reckoning, reconciling books and reconciling the budget.
Anyone else? Motion is to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is passed the second reading. If you vote, clerk call the roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
Leece?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Oh, McGivern, sorry.
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Put your vote, you approve the transfer. 10D, committee on finance referred an order that they hereby appropriated from pay wire, $22,930 and 0.05, to inspections, same amount, $22,930 and 0.05.
Take a motion received, passed the first reading?
Motion is to receive, adopt, passed first reading, and a discussion, Councilor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. We had a special appearance from the building department. Kevin Lodge was there with us to explain the reason of this transfer, although I think most of us recognize it. The position of wire inspector still remains unfilled, although the bill, I did talk to Mr. Cody, is diligently trying to find someone to, to fill that position. While we're waiting to fill the position, what, what the building department has to do is to hire an alternate position, which is a person, sometimes from another community or a person that is qualified to do inspections. The amount of money is to pay not, not for one inspection, but to pay a number of inspections this person has been working on, and he, this person, inspector chooses to, to bill at the end, as, as opposed to billing as he goes. So the, it's money that's, would be for the same service being provided, but being, being performed in a different manner.
Anyone else? Councilor Leahy will abstain from this one. Motion is to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is passed the second reading, clerk will call the roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
Leece?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Put your vote, you approve the transfer. 10E?
Take a motion received, passed the first reading?
Second.
Motion is to receive, the passed first reading. This is from, Councilor Leahy, you can come back in. This is 10E, which is the demolition fund grant. I recommend that be adopted, and a discussion, Councilor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Kevin also told us, on behalf of Damian, that this grant is received, it's in the amount of $25,000. It is, requires a match that the city spend at least the same amount with the orders coming out of the, the finance, the ordinance committee that we adopted earlier. I think it's clear that we, we got a number of buildings that are in position to spend a lot more than just $25,000 and $50,000 on for demolition. This is, no strings attached, other than the fact that we have to match the $25,000. They're looking at, with the mayor, CDBG monies, as, as we know, they're offering a portion of it, or unused a portion of it, is put towards demolition, and/or trying to find part of it within the existing budget. This is coming up, does have to be adopted this fiscal year. The finance committee recommends that we accept the grant and the responsibilities that come with it.
Councilor Murphy?
Yeah, I just want to speak in favor of this, as my understanding that $25,000 is going to be part of the money we need to take down 28 Cabinet Street, which, again, I've had constituents concerned about people going in, boarded up, the boards coming off, potentials of fire, and, and other issues, and kids walking by there, so. And again, along what we talked about before, when, when we got a chance to do demolition, we need to do it, so this is a perfect case, and I definitely support it.
Motion is to pass the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion be to pass the second reading, clerk will call the roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for the grant.
Leece? I'm sorry, Leahy? Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
Leece?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Unanimous.
Put your vote, you accepted the grant. 10F, committee on finance referred from land taking and easements, $100,002, special counsel, recommend that be adopted.
Take a motion received, passed the first reading?
Motion is to receive, adopt, passed first reading, and a discussion, Councilor McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it was two, two meetings ago that we discussed, where is, what is land takings, $100,000, and where is it in the budget? Well, we got the answer, and I'm glad we went after the answer, because I, I feel embarrassed that we missed it at the first time we tried to talk about this. Land takings is from the fiscal 2018 budget. A department head actually did the right thing, encumbered $175,000 for the purpose of taking lands and easements, which a lot of it was part of the, the urban, the renewal plan within the redevelopment committee itself, and some other land, and that the city needs for traffic issues and things like that. This particular $100,000 was for property that was expected to, to be the settlement for, for the eminent domain taking of it. And believe it or not, we got the property for $1. And so the money became free, the auditor became aware of it, and when the request came in from the law department for where the money is proposed to go to, the, the agreement was that this would come out of the, and this would be Marcus Marrero who encumbered the money out of that line item. There's a balance of $75,000 that is not on the table this evening, just $100,000, for the purpose of paying $80,000 to special counsel, and $15,000, $15,000 for litigation, and, I'm sorry, $15,000, I hate it when these agendas do this.
Claims?
$5,000 for litigation, $15,000 is for claims. I'll go back where the, the litigation is to help pay a bill that is owed. The, the amount of money and claims is a big, and I think we all recognize the year we just had, a big part of it is for pothole claims. Although the law department, the city does a good job of weeding out legitimate pothole claims. There are legitimate ones out there where drivers do need the assistance of the city to pay for damage to a vehicle. And then, as always, the special counsel are the two or three different attorneys that the city retains. This particular $80,000 of bulk of it is going to one counsel who's working on three cases. Some of these items have been discussed in executive session. The committee did recognize that our prior executive sessions have been about a different case in terms of litigation, and perhaps not enough time has been, been paid attention to bills that are owed. But this $80,000 is getting into, I believe, the third or, or fourth month of, of being owed to, to a couple of different attorneys. The committee believes that the, it is the law department who is appointed by the mayor who makes the decisions, and one outside counsel is, is, is asked, is, is, is looked for, and it's the law department's responsibility to pay the outside counsel, it's the city council's responsibility to, you know, to agree with the appropriation. Although I, you know, often believed that this should be in the budget upfront, as it always has been. Council Leahy at the meeting, and I believe one other counselor pointed out, that they were pleased that, two or three years ago, with Council McGee's input, we decided to kind of do this to more, take a look-see, and, and not pay as you go, because that's illegal, but pay, you know, when it's, when the, when the bills are due, and try to keep a, a lid on the amount of money for special counsel. The, the difference in, in, I believe, if you looked six or seven years ago in the budget for special counsel, and you looked at this year's budget, you would not believe the amount of difference in what the law department is doing. And I commend them for that. These are bills that are old, and the committee suggests on a three to two vote that this, these monies be passed, this transfer be passed, so the bills can be paid.
Councilor Leahy?
Yeah, well, okay, I'm gonna be much prerferent than that, but, um, uh, yeah, it was a good 15 minutes. So I did vote against this in committee, I'm gonna vote for it now, but I just want to, I just want to correct something the good counselor said. It was me, many years ago, long before a lot of the people in this room, certainly not underfunding the budget, because you can't do that. I think the only line item you could underfund is no removal. But what I found, when I first got on this beautiful council in 2000, is whatever money that we had in the line item got spent very quickly, and the city council oftentimes had little involvement or little idea what was happening. So what I found is if we, if we take away some of the money during budget time, we get more executive sessions, and we get more input, and we kind of have a better grasp on what's going on in the city government. So I'm gonna be voting for this tonight. Thank you.
Councilor Sullivan?
Yep, thank you. I also voted against this in committee, I'll be voting against it tonight. My problem with this is, it's all lumped together as one package, take it or leave it. So I've got no problem with the claims, I've got no, you know, $15,000, I've got no problem with the litigation, but then we have the line item, $80,000 for special counsel, which has been stated is to pay multiple attorneys. So if you have one attorney that you would disagree with the job that they're doing, you gotta pay them all. You can't, you can't single one out. And I'm telling you, the job that's being done, we're being played by the insurance companies on the collapse of the Essex House. There's no reason for this to have dragged on this long. There are steps that could have been taken by the special counsel, and they aren't. And now we're being handed the package, pay them all. Pay them all. That, let's pay this attorney, let's pay this counsel, let's pay, approve this one, and by the way, let's, we're gonna lump it all together now, where if we don't pay those special councils, we're gonna deny the claims, the potholes, and all of this. I would support this if it came as separate items. Pay the claims, pay the special counsel, or pay this group, this, this certain special council, you know, or pay litigation. But it's all coming as one package, take it or leave it. I can't support that.
Councilor Bacon?
As a point of order, for future orders such as this, can we request through you to the legal department that they come in line item by line item, so that we can manage it in the way that Councilor Sullivan suggests?
Yeah, we can request that they come in separate.
I think it would be cleaner. And then further, I just wanted to note that it was also discussed that we would have a briefing on the status in short order relative to the outside counsel.
Yep, so update on that is, went to go file it on Friday, but forgot that we had a short calendar. So, I know, I, I can't spell, I can't, anyways, no. So what we'll do is we'll do it at the next meeting. Also, we want the police chief in, so we'll push him back to the second meeting, or, in, in May, because we took that up as well.
Thank you.
We also have two Tuesdays left in this month. I don't know if you want to do before the meeting, or can you utilize one of those meetings?
Well, we'll, the group, whatever you want to do.
Before the meeting's better.
Before, yeah.
I have a conflict on the 30th.
Okay. So with that, the motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is passed the second reading, the clerk will call the roll, if you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer of $100,000.
Leahy?
Yes.
Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
Leece?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
No.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes. Brezneren.
Oh, Brezneren, sorry.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Brezneren.
Oh, Brezneren, sorry.
I got you, Bresi.
Eleven yeas, one nay.
With your vote, you approve the transfer. 10G, Committee on Finance referred an order for $110.52 for prior year encumbrances.
Make a motion, receive, to adopt.
Motion is receive, adopt, pass first reading, and our discussion, Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. The money's in the budget to pay it, it's $110.52. That is owed to the Sheriff's Department. There are two invoices that just slipped through the cracks at the end of the fiscal year, and the law department's asking permission to, with money this year, to pay for those two bills.
No further discussion. Passing the first reading, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Pass the second reading.
Motion is pass the second reading, clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Brezneren?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve the transfer. 10H is the, from the Committee on Finance, it's the safety grant, bicycle safety grant. Recommend that be adopted.
Make a motion, receive, pass first reading.
Second.
Motion is receive, adopt, pass first reading, and our discussion, Counsel McGivern.
Thank you. We had several members of the police department in during the evening for a number of items, including this one. Sergeant Hart, with the Chief President, told us that this is an $8,000 grant, there is no match, and it is well-used in a number of areas by the police department, especially before the end of the, the end of this fiscal year, during, this time of year is a good time to use this. They do sweep patrols, they do a number of different things in terms of watching what's going on with, with car, car, vehicle, traffic, and bicycle safety. They do educational components with this, and they use the money to hire, I believe it's at least in overtime, at least two individuals on the sweeper patrol. The committee recommends five to nothing that we accept the grant, and allow the police department to put it to good use.
No further discussion, motion is to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is pass the second reading, the clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the grant.
Leahy?
He's abstaining.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Brezneren?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve the transfer. 10I is Committee on Finance, $6,000 from Pay Health Services to Veteran Heritage Grant. Recommend that be adopted.
Make a motion to pass the first reading.
Motion is receive, adopt, pass first reading, and our discussion. Counsel McGivern.
Thank you. Mr. President, the money is coming from Pay Health Services. The auditor was with us at the Finance Committee meeting, she tells us that this is a vacant position currently in the Council on Aging. The Council on Aging Department had, as required, to sign off on the transfer of the monies to be used for the match in the Veterans Heritage Grant. We voted on accepting the Heritage Grant at a prior meeting this year, when Jesus was before us. This is the grant that is gonna allow him, between now and the end of the fiscal year, if this is, this is approved this evening, to digitalize, excuse me? Can you spell that, Mr. President?
Digitalize?
The veterans' records and stuff that is, that is sitting over in the office for, I don't know how many years, in hard copy form. At the time we accepted the grant, we knew there was a match, this is how the match is gonna be paid for.
No further discussion. Motion is pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is pass the second reading, clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Brezneren?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve the transfer. 10J, Committee on Finance, from Pay Health Services, $20,000, to $5,000 postage, $15,000 veteran benefits.
Make a motion, receive, pass the first reading.
Second.
Motion is pass the first reading, and our discussion, Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, Mr. President. Again, the same vacant position in the Council on Aging, where the money is coming from. The postage is a general account, $5,000 is needed to get us through the, hopefully get us through the end of the fiscal year. And the veteran benefits is that item that we, our Veterans Department is responsible for funneling the money, it's 80%, 80% reimbursed by the state, and they funnel the money through to veterans who apply for this benefit. It's, it can be a moving target, because you never know how many veterans are gonna come in in a given fiscal year. And I talked to Jesus on the phone on this one, and he says that he's having an unusual extra amount of veterans that are coming out of soldiers on in Leeds, or maybe I'm saying it wrong, but not making it into soldiers on, but coming into the city, even though they're, they're not originally from the city, but coming into the city because of the services that are offered within the city boundaries themselves, and therefore they're eligible to go, to get their benefit through our local office. Again, it's money to, it looks like it should get them through the end of the year, that's what he feels, and it's money that is reimbursed at the end of the year, 80% reimbursed.
No further discussion. Motion is pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is pass the second reading, the clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Brezneren?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve the transfer.
Make a motion, receive, pass the first reading.
Motion is receive, adopt, pass first reading, and our discussion, Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, we had, along with the police department, along with the chief, also Captain Pratt, and this item is coming from the full-time dispatchers line item into the pay part-time dispatchers. I think it was one or two budget cycles ago that the police department started recognizing with the amount of dispatchers they needed, they couldn't do it, they didn't want to do it with all full-time, because part-time, in many cases, makes more sense, especially when you're filling in for schedules and, and doing the work cycle that they have every day. In this particular one, there is a, currently a vacancy within the full-time, which they're looking to fill, but while they're waiting to fill it, they've been filling it in with part-time dispatchers, and they need the additional $2,900 to get them through the year to, for the part-time dispatchers that they, that they use. The committee recommends five to nothing that we adopt the transfer.
No further discussion, motion is pass first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading.
Motion is pass the second reading, the clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Brezneren?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve the transfer.
Make a motion to take 10L and 10M together.
Motion to suspend rules, take up L and M, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? L is Committee on Finance, refer to communication from the Hoyok Police Department regarding a conflict of interest law for Thomas Spafford, recommend that be received. M is the actual order to grant the exception to the conflict of interest law.
Make a motion, on 10L, we're just gonna be receiving back from the Committee on Finance for the purpose of discussion of 10M, and on 10N, the motion is, would be to adopt.
So, motion is to receive, adopt, our discussion, Counsel McGivern.
Thank you. I think most everyone is familiar with the special employee law. In this particular case, it is only for Mr. Thomas Spafford, who in March, and within two days, was first hired as a police reserve officer, and then two days, or I think maybe three days later, hired as a full-time employee of the Hoyok Fire Department. In the course of time, police reserve officers are used whenever possible, certain time periods, such as the road race, the parade, both parades, the Hispanic Festival, and those items, reserve officers are used quite frequently. It was inadvertent of the police department, and they were given, steered in the wrong direction, that they allowed Mr. Spafford to work parade weekend, and then found out because he had accepted the position in the fire department, that in order to do that, he needs to be designated as a special employee, to recognize master general laws, that you can only get one pay unless you are a special employee. We've done special employees, not in this area, but in other areas, many times for coaches at the high school level, who are also teachers or guidance counselors. Our prior, our former president, Counsel Jordan, was a special employee because of his position here, and he became the voice of Hoyok football, which is a scary thing when you're walking out of church on a Thursday night, and you can hear his voice 10 blocks away. It's like being in the meeting. But this, we brought up, it brought up a new idea, and reserves, almost all our police reserve officers work somewhere full-time, so they can only, you know, according to their schedules, can only work so many hours for the police department, and yet it's part of a requirement to be a reserve. So our chief told us that they work very closely with the reserves, and they would love to have the option of, when his schedule permits, Mr. Spafford to, to be, to perform the duties of a reserve officer. And they also recognize that they would like to, they need this, at least, to pay him for what he did on parade weekend.
Counsel Lisi.
Thank you. So last time, this was before, I had a question about the special employee status, and if this individual is recognized as a member of the Hoyok Police Department, or if they are always recognized as a special employee, because I think that would also have an impact on the retirement benefits that they are eligible for. So did we ever get any information about that?
My answer, and I believe it's backed up, I forget if I've, I thought we did receive this from the law department, I'm not sure, not from Cristo, but attorney, who was with us?
Pago.
Marsh, Marshall?
Marshall, yeah.
I think so. But the, he is right now a full-time, recognized as a full-time firefighter, which would, would be the qualifications for retirement, if anything, until he decides if he ever did to make a change, or the police department decide to offer him a full-time job. The special employee designee is only to perform duties, and only for him, in this, in this case, for the police department. So the monies, as far as retirement goes, the monies, the monies, I don't believe would be recognized as far as retirement goes, but I'm hesitating to say that 100%.
Captain Feeble pointed out, and so did Officer Hart, that...
Chief Feeble?
Chief, I'm still trying to get a used it. The issue is, this is temporary only to him for this position, and it will end, because at some point, they'll offer him the full-time, to go to the full-time academy, in order to be a full-time officer, of which if he doesn't accept, he is now removed. So I think it's like three times to it, limitation of about three years, but they don't even see it going that long. So this was just a, in essence, a catch-all that, he was trying to do either job, he got hired for one, he's gonna have to get paid for this, because he did serve the time during parade, but it really doesn't add to more retirement or anything else, it's just a limited timeframe for this specific person.
Like a contracted service?
Yep, it is, it's contracted services through the auxiliary police.
All right, thank you for that.
Anyone else? Don't tell them, I didn't call them chief. All right, with that, so 10L would be that we receive it, because it's a communication, Counsel McGivern?
Yes, please.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? 10M would be to grant the exception to the conflict of interest law, if you could do a roll call for that? Clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the exemption.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Brezneren?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve the exemption. 10N, Committee on Finance, has referred an order that the City Council Finance meet with the police department to discuss leasing police cruisers. Have considered the same, recommended that the order has been complied with, recommendation to the mayor to go forward with the order.
Make a motion to receive and to adopt the committee report that both the order was complied with, and to forward it to the mayor with our approval of attempting to, to take this idea forward.
Second.
So, motion is to receive, adopt, and forward to the mayor to go forward with the recommendation. Our discussion, Counsel McGivern.
Thank you, real quickly, the chief was very good at discussing this. Leasing is probably not the correct word, although it kind of falls into a deal that's being, would be made with a, with the dealership who provides our vehicles, our cruisers. And I think we all know the issue, but just real quick to recap it, our fleet right now is, is getting old. There are four cruisers that are in the better shape, which is 75,000 miles, they're 2016 vehicles, and then there are two cruisers that are even older, who are over 100,000 miles. Typically, I think most of us know that what happens is, as the vehicles get, get old, and cannot perform the 24/7 duty required of them, they become other, a part of the fleet performing other duties, perhaps detective deverre, or perhaps administrative use, and as new cruisers come in, they fill into the, into the categories. In an ideal world, with no budget problems, we would, we would buy two to four cruisers every year, and try to keep up with the, with the fleet for the, with the police department. And this is, you know, barring that occasional accident, where an even newer cruiser, you know, could be taken offline, or could have to go through some serious, serious repair. So the idea of this is, the deal would be a multi-year, a multi-year deal, two-year terms, with the possibility, I believe, of going into a third-year term. The amount of money would be, would be to get the six cruisers up front, of $148,223.52 for the, for the first fiscal year, and to be able to look at these, and I think Counsel McGee, and perhaps Counsel Leahy, both pointed out, that the, you know, this is more of a capital, way of approaching a capital line item, not so much a contract, a contract is there, but not a lease contract, you know, the city would own these outright. The whole idea is, we need to do something, because what we're doing is not working, and every time we try to do it, we fail for one reason, one legitimate reason or another. So the request, with the orders been complied, we've had the discussion, the committee agrees with the, conceptually, with the idea. We pointed out to the chief that, there's, appropriations are always subject to vote, and whoever the dealer is, they need to work with them to understand that, you know, they get the money for one year, doesn't mean the money is necessarily gonna come up for a second year. We are not voting on the money right now, we would still have the obligation of voting on any money appropriated for this, if it's in the next budget cycle, that's probably the first time we'll see it, and at that time, you know, we can vote to go forward as a line item. The chief seemed to understand that. Our thoughts are that, not only do we do our job with the, with the police chief request, but we'd like the mayor to take this and see if he can run with it, and come back with a good proposal to put in front of us.
All right, Counsel Tomlin.
Yeah, I'll be brief on this one, right, Jim? I think it's a great plan, the chief came before us, and this is a way of getting, you know, the six new cars every couple of years, and the ones that, after the two years are up, they'll reuse those cars, as sort of like with, for parts for the other vehicles, and it sounds like, you know, like a capital plan, and hopefully the mayor will find money to be able to put this in there every two years, and, you know, we gotta have good equipment for, I mean, everybody knows that they need to go out and do the job, our public safety officials should have the best equipment from what they encounter, on a day-to-day basis, and as Counsel McGivern stated, they do put, I don't know how many thousands, $75,000, $80,000 a year on these vehicles, and they do a lot of wear and tear, so it's important that we give them the best equipment possible.
Any more further?
Sir President, if I have a quick personal privilege on finance?
Yes.
There's two items that we tabled. I just want to point out, one of them is becoming time-sensitive. It's a number of executive sessions we've had towards litigation and the possibility of settling some litigation. One major, one minor. But the item in committee is the appropriation, which is from stabilization, and goes into the litigation account itself. It's $518,948. We tabled it because we believe that there are still some questions that have not been answered, both by the Law Department and by, in committee. By the Law Department and by the special counsel serving on the case. And I would just suggest that anyone who still has questions open, could you make sure the Law Department is aware of those questions, so we can get those answers. The time-sensitive is the end of April. Right now, the continuance goes, I believe, to somewhere near the end of April, or one or two Saturdays from now. And we just need to, whether, and the stabilization I know is always an issue. Just so everybody knows, the free cash balance is holding steady at the moment, but it's $164,000. We look like the snow removal deficit is gonna run about $75,000. They're looking to see if they can fund that within the budget, or at least part of it within the budget. I think everybody is up to date on the insurance issues. There's two deficits that are gonna be before us before the end of the fiscal year. One involves the underfunding of the medical insurance accounts, which is close to $600,000 at the moment. It's a moving target. And the other is an issue with dental, where the agreement is, the city match was supposed to be 50 of the premium, but for some reason, the city was, has been paying 45 percent of the premium all along. And there's some negotiation with the committee and with the unions as to how to make that up. That would be running in the $200,000 range. The, our new auditor has done an incredible job, I think, of, without being asked, reviewing every line item within the budget and identifying surplus monies, and does, and will continue to do that between now and the fiscal year. And whenever possible, recommend to the Mayor that, or let the Mayor know where the surpluses lie. I just wanted to update the committee, update the members of the council, but if you could get any unanswered questions on litigation to the Law Department, I think it would be very helpful in this matter.
Councilor Bacon?
Just as a point of order, I would like to ask that that request for appropriation be split into the two parts that were discussed in committee, so it can come to the council as two separate items.
Anyone further? Okay. There's no public safety, no public service. Off to DGNR 13A. Committee on DGNR was referred, taking of temporary easements by eminent domain for the several parcels listed, recommended that be adopted. Oh, Councilor Sullivan?
Okay, fasten your seat belts, this is a first for me.
No, it's the second, I think. I think it's the second time, so.
We'll back you up.
And I'll warn you too, I'm working from Counselor Bartley's legal shorthand, too, for notes, so. Do we have a late file that should go with this also, the first one?
The roots?
Yes, SRTS.
Yeah, that's the attachment that goes with it. D?
Alright, so can we take that late file with 13A?
Motion is to suspend rules and take up late file, whatever it is with 13A.
Uh, C?
Late file C?
I have D on here, that's why I'm only asking. Okay, so this is C. Okay. So motion is to suspend rules, take up late file C. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Late file C is safe routes to schools, SRTS. And it gets, it's a diagram and pictures of Maple Street and all different easements. So you want that to take up as well, Councilor Sullivan?
Correct.
Alright, so Councilor Sullivan's gonna add it to 13A. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Back to you.
Okay, so what we've got, we've got in front of the safe routes to school, along with the packet that came on it. This is really, in effect, Main and Appleton Street, Preston Street. Some of the highlights are, the biggest, one of the nicest things about it, this is no cost to the City of Hoyoke. This is a $2.2 million project. It's completely state-funded. Our role in it is only advisory. It does also include new signals at Main and Appleton, which I think was part of some other budgetary stuff we had looked at in the past. So that'll come off of that list, and we'll be getting that done for free also. We'll be adding ADA ramps, improving sidewalks, replacing lighting underneath the Appleton Street Railway Bridge. And I think two of the nicest things about this are, this was started back in, I believe, 2013 by the principal of the school at the time. Maybe Counselor Martinez can help me out with the name there?
Jacqueline.
Yeah. So a special thanks to her. This has been six years.
Jacqueline.
Yeah.
This has been six years in the process. That's pretty good money to be coming into the city. It's a nice project for the children, for the safety. The other thing is, the, all of the easements, even though this is an eminent domain, taking their temporary easements, and the city isn't, it's a legal process, but every one of these has been donated by the property's owners. Every property owner has agreed and has donated it. So a special thanks to all those property owners that are also listed in here for you in the SRTS. So, having said that...
So the motion is to adopt. Any further discussion for anyone? No. Clerk will call the roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the temporary easement taking for all the listed parcels.
Leahy? Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Resnahan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approved 13A. 13B, the Committee on DGNR was referred in order that the City Council update the status from the former geriatric authority property. Order that's been complied with.
Motion is to suspend the rules and take up B and C.
So we're gonna take up B and C.
Second.
All those in favor? All opposed? C is DGNR update the payment status regarding money owed under the Ngadara lease from the geriatric authority, also been complied with. Counselor Sullivan?
Okay, so the interesting thing here is, his notes say the solicitor is researching it, but that there was a trade-off as far as the works and improvement they had done on the building, as far as compensation for rents not received. Right now, that's the answer that we've received, that from the sounds of it, there will be no monies forthcoming on that. It's just a trade-off for upgrades that were done during the lease period. The purchase and sale agreement is under review right now, and that's about it.
Anyone else? Motion that, oh, Councilor Bacon.
I had filed those, and they're now resolved. They were somewhat dated, so we're all set. Thanks.
So B and C, the motion is that they've been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 13D, Committee on DGNR was referred in order that the DGNR committee meets to discuss the future status of the Springdale Turn Hall. Is it potentially able to be renovated? What is the estimated cost for demolition, or it's been complied with? Our discussion, Counselor Sullivan?
Yeah, so it consists of really two parcels. One's already been cleared surplus. There's been RFPs issued. There have been no responses. As far as, there's been some talk of a selective demo to make it more attractive to a buyer. It's probably too expensive to rehab, then City of Hoyoke will have to come up with a credible plan. The building has a roof that's leaking like crazy. That roof also is what's called transite tile, which is almost a cement tile. It contains asbestos. This is gonna be an expensive project. If it's not done, if it's not handled promptly, we could be looking at a cave-in or other damage in the building. There's, at that point, you're talking about the whole thing going away as commingled, contaminated waste. So I think we better get moving on this one. There's also concerns brought up about fire, safety in the neighborhood. Maybe Counselor Murphy could expand on this?
Yeah, I just...
Counselor Murphy? If I might.
Go ahead.
So, you know, first of all, I think we've heard in committee that really, it's time we either make a decision to demolish this, because it doesn't look like we're gonna get people that want to come in and purchase it as-is. And it is, I've had neighbors talking to me about their concerns that if it went on, if it went up, what would happen to their houses that are one, two, or three houses away and going downhill? And if the wind's going in the wrong direction, that their houses could be jeopardized. But I think it's another example of when we get buildings, we need to decide early on, are we doing something to renovate, or are we getting rid of a building that is no longer able to be rehabbed? And clearly, from the committee, the idea of rehabbing it and creating a rec center, which some people had asked if it was possible, from a financial perspective, does not seem to be realistic. And so I'm hoping that in the very near future, if we don't get someone, in the very near future, to say they wanna take it over and buy it, that we decide we gotta spend the money and demolish it and make that neighborhood a little safer. And also, it's got a potential of having some housing development there.
Anyone further? Motion that 13D has been complied with. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? 13E, Committee on DGNR was referred, resolution opposing expansion of gas infrastructure and calling for an increased development of implementation of renewable clean energy source. Have considered the same, recommend that the resolution be given, leave to withdraw?
Yeah, that was at the request of the Neighbor to Neighbor Group. Perhaps Counselor Valentine could expand on this one for us?
Counselor Valentine?
Thank you. I had, I had met with the folks from Neighbor to Neighbor who had requested that we file this order in the first place. It was originally fired, fi- fired, filed. It's been a long night. Filed by Counselor Romang and myself, and basically, and I think Counselor Lisi had joined in as well. And so they, after I met with them a couple of weeks ago to get an update on where they were at, they had been reaching out to members of this body individually, and had gotten the sense that, at this time, there is not a majority on the body that is looking to move something like this forward. So they're gonna pursue other options, and so the request was to give leave to withdraw.
Anyone further? Counselor Lisi?
I would just amend that to give leave to withdraw without prejudice.
Motion is to amend to give leave, withdraw without prejudice? It is a long night. It was seconded. That is, R, oh, wait, I'm sorry, that spell is over. Alright, so on the amendment, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? So it's give, leave, draw without prejudice. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 14A. Committee on Charter and Rules, did I miss one for you, Counselor?
I'd like to make note, record time for DGNR.
Great job.
Great job.
Good job.
That was excellent.
Charter and Rules to whom it was referred, nor that Article 2, Section 42-41, compensation be changed to allow for stipend for fire commissioners. Have considered the same, order be referred to ordinance committee. So just send it to a different committee.
Make a motion, the committee report be adopted and sent to ordinance committee?
Motion is to receive and send to ordinance. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? We are on to motion, no, school and joint committee, so we're off to orders and resolutions. 16 is from Counselor Sullivan and Bartley, that's Section 19. The Mayor shall appoint three persons to the fire commissioners, subject to the City Council confirmation.
Charter and rules.
Two charter and rules. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 17 from Counselor Sullivan, that the City Council approve the recommendation of the CPAC, grant an amount of $30,000. Funds are for historic facade at 123 Pine Street. And 18 looks like another one for the same thing. 120, do you want to take them together?
Right, right now, I'd like to take these as two separate ones.
Okay, just, alright, so the first one is for $30,000.
Yeah, so just following with what we've done in the past, this one, I've got no problems if we'd like to take it up on the floor and pass it tonight.
To the body, that's where. So motion is to receive, adopt, and pass the first reading?
Reading.
Our discussion, Counselor Sullivan?
Yeah. The committee thought this was a real good one. I think with what just happened with a facade on Cabot Street this week, what we've seen going on with the church and stuff, this is a building that we do want to save, and regardless of what work, this is something that could start immediately. It's $30,000. It is strictly for facade work. It's under the historic designation. So I, this was unanimous through the committee, and make a motion to approve the grant.
Second.
Counselor Tomlin?
Yeah, just a question, because I know we brought this up the last time we did the CPA funds. Is there a timeframe through to President for this, Mr. Counselor Sullivan?
Well, the timeframe would be, they pretty much want to get started right away.
Okay, I mean, deadline or something, yeah. Because I know, we had talked earlier that some of these awards that we were gonna try to discuss in committee. You know, so I don't, you know, I defer to Counselor McGivern. I mean, we talked about the money that should be looked at in one of our committees if it's not dire. I know, like the stained glass windows, we had a timeframe of, you know, a couple of weeks, so we voted on it off the floor. And I think that night, we did all the funds we passed here tonight. But, I mean, just so my colleagues feel, I think it's important that maybe we can have the people that are applying for these grants to come in, either in DGR or Finance, and just discuss them, if it only delayed a couple of weeks to our next meeting, to get an idea of what they're actually trying to do. If anybody else has any ideas, I'd feel more comfortable sending these to a committee.
Hold on, Counselor Bacon?
Thank you. I'm inclined to support this one, because it's not a large amount, and it's coming through unanimously from the committee, but it sounds like the other one might be a different matter, and it's a lot more money, so I think we can think about each one.
Counselor Sullivan?
Either way, I mean, they could, they're tied together. It is two separate uses of the funds. It's, one's from the historic part, and the other's from the housing part. The, I was gonna suggest sending 18 to committee. That one isn't as time-sensitive, but it is tied to other funding. And there would be time restrictions on how long they could tie up the funds for. So...
So the one before us currently is for $30,000. The motion was to pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion would be to pass the second reading?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Second.
Motion is pass the second reading. Clerk will call a roll. If you vote yes, you're voting for the $30,000 transfer.
Leahy? Lebron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Resnahan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approved the transfer. 18, what committee do you want to send that to?
Go to Finance or DGNR.
Say Finance. So motion is to send 18 to Finance. All those in favor?
I agree with Finance. Just one request, though, Mike, if you could do this for all of us. I appreciate the time sensitivity. I appreciate the hard work of the committee this year itself. But for next year, could we kinda get things in quicker, so we don't have to rush them?
If...
Or could you send that message on behalf of us?
That I will. That I will.
Alright, so 18 is to Finance. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 19 is for Counselor Bacon, that the crosswalk sign be, a crosswalk sign be placed at the crosswalk of Bray Park Drive.
Receive, adopt, and send to DPW.
Motion is receive, adopt, send to DPW. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 20 is that the previously approved solar stoplight at County and Southampton Road be installed as soon as possible.
Receive, adopt, and send to DPW.
Motion is to receive, adopt, send to DPW. What?
I said I should have put them together.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We're back to 21, which is from Counselor Bacon. Or at the City Council, adopt a resolution regarding House Bill 3320 and Senate Bill 1209.
Motion is sent to DGNR.
Second.
Motion is to send to DGNR, it was seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No.
You guys have it. 22 is from Counselor Bartley, that the DPW replace the sidewalk on the north side of Westfield Road, starting from 119 Westfield Road, running west on Michigan Ave. Heavily used for walkers, so receive, adopt, send to DPW. For 22. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 23 from Counselor Bartley, DPW repave, and if necessary, regrade Martin Street to, from West Glen to Hitchcock. Motion would be receive, adopt, and send to DPW. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? 24 from Counselor Bartley, that DPW should provide the City Council an update in the efforts to improve public parking. in the efforts to improve public parking, please provide updates on the, uh, third-party vendor, uh, please provide update, uh, year-over-year revenue collection and so on. So, this would go to pub... Alright, to Finance, all those in favor? All opposed?
And a copy to the superintendent.
And a copy to superintendent. Copy to DPW.
Let's, Dan wants this one.
Yeah, I was gonna say public ser, safety.
Do I reconsider, send to public safety? Yeah, Councilor Bacon, sure.
Um, well, there's a big revenue issue here.
No, there is, and I, I...
We're all talking about the budget and paying the money, and we've been, what, like, two years?
Councilor, uh, no, Councilor McGivern?
Councilor Bacon is correct, I, I appreciate that, and Finance will be happy to do it. Um, we got some time constraints ourselves between now and, uh, and May, and, and I'm thinking, even though it's budget-related, there's no budget vote in this order. It's an update on where are we with all those promises that have been made to upgrade the parking, uh, decks, and, and the original stuff was actually more recently handled in ordinance, but if Public Safety would do it, we'd appreciate it, but if not, we'd be happy to do it.
I'd be happy to. Public Safety wants this, so, I'm gonna say, motion is to send to Public Safety with a copy to DPW. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Twenty-five is from myself, order that, uh, four point six point two point one corner lots be amended, allowing corner lots to, uh, set up a fence, um, this is just a refile because we missed filing deadlines, so to ordinance.
Motion is receive and set up the public hearing.
Motion is received, set up a public hearing, send to ordinance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? From Councilor McGee, that the City of Hoyok accept or adopt Michelle Lane as a city street. Um, I did receive an email from the engineer saying that he believed it already was, but I'd like to say receive and send to the engineer, and then get an update back.
So moved.
So moved, yep.
With an update back to the full council. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? If it is, my job is done. Um... Alright, receive and refer to the clerk's office.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, twenty-seven, um, from Councilor McGee, order that the DPW work with Mass DOT to rehab Route Five from Hampden Street to Mountain View via the Complete Streets Program. Motion is to receive, adopt, and send a copy to the state delegation.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Take a motion to take twenty-eight and thirty as a package?
Motion is take twenty-eight and thirty as a package.
Report to committee on Finance.
And refer to Finance. Uh, twenty-eight is other contracted services, five hundred dollars to overtime, and then the Assistant Library Director, three thousand five hundred forty-seven dollars and seventy-seven cents to library assistant, same amount, that's agenda item number thirty. Motion is receive as a package, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion is to send to Finance, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Twenty-nine.
Take a motion to, uh, receive, to pass the first reading for this evening?
Motion is spend, uh, actually, motion is to receive, adopt, pass the first reading, uh, our discussion, Councilor McGivern?
I think everybody recognizes it, it's from regular salary line item into injured-on-duty for accounting purposes and keeping tracking of anyone, any one of our public safety officials who is paid through injured-on-duty.
Of which there's one, two, three, four, five of them. I know everyone likes to know the number. So, it's nine thousand three hundred and twenty dollars, twenty-eight cents from their budget to injured-on-duty standard accounting. Motion is pass the first reading. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion is pass the second reading, Clerk of Colorado, if you vote yes, you're voting for the transfer.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Anderson Burgos?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
With your vote, you approve the transfer.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Can I ask you for clarification, 'cause I'm, I'm a little confused? Um, we had voted on twenty-one earlier this evening?
Yep.
Where do we stand right now with that?
It went to committee?
How is that possible if we only had, uh, five votes in favor before?
Well, we took a voice vote, of which I only heard one no. If you want to take it back up, we can.
If we could, yeah, if we could do a, a motion to, that was very confusing.
I'm gonna say, it's, it may not be worth, um, because it only needs six votes, because it's going to committee, so it's not like it needs seven votes to go to committee, right?
Alright. No, you need seven.
It's, it's, it's seven, that's what I'm saying. It has to be a majority.
Majority, seven.
And there's thirteen of us.
Majority?
Seven.
Majority of the council. Not, not those present. Not those present.
So, it, it was very confusing, we had taken a vote on twenty-one, and then all of a sudden, it was like, yay, what?
I only heard one no, just to be clear.
So, if, if we can please, um, do a motion to reconsider, because I think in the...
Motion is to reconsider twenty-one, hold on, let me find it.
Thank you. We did a show of hands before, I think it's fair enough to try that again, 'cause it's what we did the first round. Thank you.
Alright, twenty-one's back up.
Thank you.
Motion is reconsider, which is the order that the council adopt a resolution opposing House Bill Thirty-three Twenty and Senate Bill Twelve Oh Nine. Councilor McGivern?
And a motion to reconsider, I, I'm gonna vote against it, and I'll explain quickly why. Um, first of all, I believe Councilor Lisi is right, 'cause I'm the one that told her that, is, this is a procedural vote to get something on the agenda item into committee, similar to if, if we made a motion to adjourn, we just need the majority of people who are present. When you recognized twenty-one for the second time, because it failed on a tie vote twice, five to five, Council President had had joined us, and I believe Council Leahy was still here. The, the difference being that there was one extra vote when you recognized the voice vote as passing, so I think at that point in time, you were correct, 'cause only one, I only heard one no myself, that the, uh, that the motion to, uh, to put it in committee did pass. Um, if we go back to it now, Council Leahy is not here, and we're back to, uh, I think an unfair situation where this should've been argued when everybody was present.
Can I ask another procedural question, if you don't mind?
Go ahead, Councilor Lisi.
Uh, so, if it doesn't go to committee, and it's not tabled, where is it? It's not...
We're gonna be here till sometime tomorrow morning.
Yeah, it's not, it's not, we don't quote-unquote "kill" it by not dealing with it, it would, it would effectively be tabled anyhow.
Correct.
Because if we don't deal with the matter, it's as if we hadn't taken it off the table, which means it just is on the table for the next time around, so, you know. At the end of the day, I think that we should send it to committee, I hope it sits in committee for years and years, the way that other, um, orders have had to sit there for years and years, without coming up for air again.
So, motion, Councilor Valentine?
I, I just feel, you know, we had a, a full discussion here, the majority of us were here on time, we took a vote on it, based on discussion, based on points that were made, and for something to be reconsidered, literally, three hours after the meeting started, is, is just a disservice when it was brought up the first time to then go to DGR, so, the, the reason I'm asking to reconsider now is based on that former reconsider piece, where there was no show of hands, it was very confusing, and it felt as if we had addressed this hours ago. That's why I'm asking for that now.
Councilor Bacon?
To be fair, this matter was taken up at the very beginning of the city council meeting, taken out of order. It was discussed, it was voted on three times, all votes failed, it remained on the table, it came up in regular order. The motion made to send it to committee was very simple, very straightforward, and only one person said no. I think it's unfair to go beat on this again. Everybody's orders that have come before this body have been sent to committee, whether they've been taken up quickly, slowly, a year's been spent on them, or they've taken a year, but they go and they get their hearing. And I request respectfully for my colleagues not to reconsider this, it was fairly and robustly considered, thank you.
So, currently, the motion is to reconsider, is there a second? The motion fails for a lack of a second.
Can I please be on the record as opposing this?
Yes.
Thank you, since there was no show of hands. Thank you.
Me too.
Then do, do you want to reconsider?
I want to reconsider, of course.
Alright, so the motion is to reconsider, second.
Second.
I'll do it for everyone, second.
Second, okay.
Alright, so the motion is to reconsider. If you're reconsidering, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Chairs in doubt, raise your hands if you want to reconsider.
Reconsidering.
To reconsider.
So, motion fails, it, motion was that it go to committee, DGR, that's where it is.
Thank you.
It's not personal.
Alright, alright, everyone.
Political.
Alright.
We're a political body.
So, let's catch back up. Where were we? So, thirty-one is, no, we didn't do thirty-one. Uh, from Councilor Murphy, order that DPW repaint, uh, bless you, Elm Street between Sergeant and Franklin Street, also South Summer Street between Adams and Sergeant Streets.
Make a motion to be adopted and sent to the DPW.
Motion is receive, adopt, and send to DPW. All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-two. From Councilor Murphy, order that the gas-electric expand the light capacity at Pole Forty-One, improve the lighting in that area, concerns for darkness, motion would be receive, adopt, send to HG&E with a copy to the mayor.
So moved.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Thirty-three from Councilor Murphy, order that the DPW have the corner lot at the corner of Sergeant and Clemente Street cleaned up, uh, and if possible, remove the fence of which its, uh, trash is clinging to it.
Make a motion to be adopted and sent to the DPW?
Motion is receive, adopt, and send to DPW. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? We do have late files, late file A. Seen how we already took one up. Uh, this one, I do believe we, we received from Irma, which was, it technically wasn't a late file, she just forgot to attach it. Subject to your approval, I hereby appoint the following individual to serve as commissioner to the planning board, uh, in order to replace, uh, Mr. LaChappelle, I do believe.
Receive, refer to public service.
Yep, so it's new, so it's public service, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? B is from Councilor Murphy, order that the city council authorize forty-five thousand from the balance of the bond for the tennis courts to upgrade and repair, uh, Jim Jackson basketball courts on South Canal Street. Uh, this is time-sensitive, and it is an emergency, 'cause the funds would have to be done before May seventh, otherwise, we'd have trouble with the leagues. So, motion is to spend the rules...
Make a motion to spend the rules, have discussion this evening?
To take up B now and take action, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Uh, Council Murphy?
Yeah, just, uh, you know, I've been working since I got back on, and, uh, Councilor Sullivan had, uh, co-signed an order with me about the Jackson Courts, and the original thought was the DPW was through community development funds, was gonna be able to upgrade them and get them ready, and I've also been working with Eddie Case from the Safe Neighborhood Initiative, to try to bring more things going down into South Hoyok, and this was one of the things he really was hoping to be able to do this summer, and put some tournaments together. I've, I've spoken with, uh, Mike McManus and Bob Parent, uh, city engineer, about this, uh, everything was looking okay, and then they realized they didn't have enough money from community development funds at this time. It is time-sensitive, they've got, uh, contractors that are ready to bid, uh, that have indicated that if they could know by approximately May seventh, they could get the work done before the end of June, and it would be back to its original top quality, uh, two outdoor basketball courts, where we could have multiple games going on at the same time. Uh, and there is, I believe, a hundred and forty thousand, uh, that was left over from the tennis court bond, and then eventually, if need be, the community development funds that we were trying to reprogram for this, potentially could go to, I, I know the goal was to put it towards the pool. So, I'm hoping that you'll, you'll adopt this and send this to the mayor, so that we can in fact have the mayor submit something back to us for May seventh, and hopefully, uh, get the project done by the end of June, and, and have some tournaments down there this summer.
So, just for everyone to understand, right now, it's just a request that since there, they didn't use up all the bonding for the tennis courts, that Council Murphy is saying, can we redo the bond, 'cause we know we have the, we call it the Bartley Rule, you can't just move money around to different projects, you have to stick to the scope. Therefore, we're asking to change the scope in order to add on this basketball court.
So, we would still have to talk about the money and the reprogramming?
Well, what we have to do is, we have to just receive this, refer it to the mayor, hopefully, he will do a new bond, adding the court to the tennis bond.
Right, if, but will we also have an opportunity to look at reprogramming the CDBG money instead of adding to the bond, in the same conversation?
You know, Councilor Sullivan?
I mean, we keep borrowing, borrowing.
That's a question for Alicia Zoller, I don't know what's left in the fund, or how much is, uh...
So, that's the stuff we'll...
Unattached to.
To, to Council Murphy, I think he has an answer to the question.
Yeah, 'cause that's what the original goal was, that we were gonna do reprogramming, and they've told me that it, they will have reprogramming money, but it won't be available until after.
The timeframe.
So, could I offer an amendment, that should the reprogramming money become available, so that it could be used before we en, enter into the bond, that...
I'd be fine with that.
We do that, or pay off, 'cause it'll be a short-term bond, maybe at that point, I don't know.
All this is just sending a communication to the mayor, saying we need something...
Alright.
For the next meeting, in order to act before his deadline, which is May seventh.
But we can take those up, pass.
But if they come in two different ones, or they come in with whatever, that's what we'll act on.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Alright, so motion is to receive, uh, and resent, and send to the mayor with a, hopefully, a correspondence back before the next meeting.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
We did see.
Oops, sorry, this is C. From Councilor Barbara Martinez, that the handicap parking located at Seven Center State, Seven Center Street be removed, uh, per residence request, so to ordinance.
Seven Center, to ordinance, yep.
To ordinance. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? That is it, motion is to adjourn.
Hang on, hang on, hang on.
Oh, oh, sorry, Council Sullivan, I apologize.
Yeah, uh, I'd like to just make one quick observation for everybody, on the twenty-fourth, at five-thirty, the Finance Committee is gonna be having a meeting, it's gonna be at five-thirty, we have Bond Council coming in from Boston, uh, we also have members of the, uh, City Retirement Board, I hope the mayor, the treasurer, the assessor, uh...
Gas, electric.
Gas, electric. Uh, I would encourage everybody, if you can't be here yourself, to take some time, look at this, you know, follow this meeting, uh, the recording and stuff like this, this is, uh, regarding the pension obligation bond, it's the only thing that's gonna be discussed, I believe, that night, and it's a very, very complex issue, and it's gonna take, you know, some studying and, uh, some research, so I, I would encourage everybody, if you can't attend it, uh, you know, take, take a look at the recording and review it, and, uh, try and be here and have some questions.
This is Finance Committee, right?
Yes. Councilor McGivern?
Just along that lines, uh, the reason five-thirty is twofold, one, so Cinder can get out here and get out of Hoyok at a reasonable notice to get back towards, uh, towards Boston, and she, as you know, I think Cinder McNairy is our financial consultant, and very well-equipped to discuss this, there's gonna be a short power presentation, the meeting will only be an hour and a half, 'cause I promised Chairman Councilor Murphy, that we will, whatever happens, we will, we will stop the meeting after an hour and a half, so that the Charter and Rules Committee is set to re, resume their discussion on any ballot question for the, uh, the middle school projects.
Councilor Lisi?
And, and just because the, the timing works out so neatly, it would be great if Cinder would stay for at least a few questions at the beginning of Charter and Rules, because I think, um, it'd be great to ask some questions of her regarding, uh, debt exclusion, now that I think everybody's a little bit more versed in it. Um, I don't know if that, if she bills us by the hour, or anything like that, but it would be great to have her here for, um, at least a short period of time.
Well, we can ask her, I'll defer to Council McGivern, I know she had a specific request, so I'm not, I can't give the answer.
She, she is aware of the meeting, I gave her the heads-up, in how, you know, we're gonna work, uh, quickly on the pension obligation, um, I, I'm not gonna defer to, you know, Chairman Murphy, but I think it's up to that committee if they wish her to stay, um, certainly Tanya or myself can get ahold of her, or I can share an email, where you can get ahold of her to see if she's willing.
Council Murphy?
Not that I've ever met the lady before, but we've been in communication, as I've been...
She's been around since nineteen seventy-three, I think you have met her.
No, 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 I never met her. I trust you, I know that, but I have been in touch with her, and we've been asking other questions about the debt exclusion and a few other things, so, I mean, and I can certainly invite her to stay, I have no problem doing that, if that is, should, should be desired.
I think, I think an email to her, giving her a heads-up, that if she can stay for the next meeting for a little bit, it'd be appreciated.
Okay.
Anyone else? Motion is to adjourn, all those in favor?
Aye.